All right. Good evening. This is the meeting of the February 2022 Board of Appeals, a village in Mamaroneque. First, we have a quorum that tonight we have Robin Kramer here, May Jargon, Greta Herney, Heaney, I'm sorry, Brian Gladstein, and myself, I'm Dave Newfeld. We have counsel on the phone with us is Robert Stout. But we're another counsel who's generally with us is Charlie Gottlieb will be here in a bit. We have Brittany O'Neil from the Planning Department, and I believe we have this Dennis Drogenon. Thought I'd seen his name before, but I guess not.
Dennis is on.
Okay, from the Building Department. All right, just very briefly, just to outline our procedures initially. There's really three parts to our meetings. The first is we conduct public hearings. Tonight, there are three public hearings. And at that time, after the public hearings are done, we will, there's, there's the, well, excuse me, I'm sorry. It's coffee, I gotta get it. Okay. So the public hearing is where you come forward on your application and please present your matter. You can refer to the documents, we have the documents we have. Answer questions that are posed by the board, not by others, and answer the question of the board, and please don't argue. All we're doing is gathering information to support your position. We're not deliberating on it, we're not making decisions, we're listening to you and taking in the information. So please be kind enough to do that. And the public is invited to comment. And they will, if they have questions, they ask the board, if the board then wants to ask the applicant, we will do so. Following that, the individual hearing will either be adjourned to another meeting, if there's a reason for that, or it will be closed. If the hearing is closed, then there is no further comment. The next part of our meeting is deliberations on closed applications. We have several closed applications this evening to take up, and they will be considered, and that's where the board deliberates. That's not a public hearing portion. We will be deliberating on it as a board, you can listen to that, but please do not speak up, and that's the deliberation process. For the matters that are on tonight with board, we'll have the next two meetings to take them up for deliberation. Given the number of matters that are open now for deliberation, it's unlikely we'll get to something tonight that's being heard tonight. Okay? And following deliberations tonight, the board may also vote on a prior resolution that it's had prepared. It's sometimes customary for the board to, when it makes a decision, it will have the resolution prepared sometimes, depending upon it, sometimes it will not. We'll just vote without having it in front of us, but usually it'll come up again. Following that, board may take up some other matters that are on its agenda. And, okay, just ask if everybody would be kind enough to please be to the point. Obviously, speak what we want to speak about, but we do want to proceed and repeating something is generally not necessary. All right, so the first meeting, the first, if we now proceed, are there any applications to adjourn a matter? Okay, very good, having heard none. First matter is 911 Fairway Lane. As the applicant here on that. Okay, this was a matter that was on last time.
Does the applicant possibly say I have a service delivery listed? Is that the applicant? It's not a name.
Okay, well, this was on, of course, I don't want to carry this. This is the owner is Carol Campilli.
There's somebody here, David.
Yep, I'm promoting her.
Okay, great. Does anyone see?
Thank you, I'm sorry. I'm not great with Zoom, so.
All right, well, we'll zoom along, don't worry about it, everything will be fine. So good evening, and your name is?
I'm changing it right now, I know how to do that.
Okay, well, you can just tell it to us as well.
Okay, my name is Carol Campilli.
Okay, good evening, and you're the owner of the property, I believe, correct?
I'm the owner of 911 Fairway Lane. I for, for listening to me tonight and for considering my application. And I just want to apologize about missing last month's meeting. I am so new to this process, I'm such a novice. I just thought you guys spoke on your own and got back to me, so I am very sorry about that.
Okay, no, we'd like to hear from everybody because you've got to, basically, in order to get a variance, you need three votes. Everybody wants to listen to you and understand your position. I would point out initially, this is an area variance you're seeking for the installation of a natural gas generator.
Correct.
And I, and I'll let you go in a moment, but I do want you to make sure you address one thing. There seems to be a variance, not an area variance, but a difference between the setback that's required. We've taken a look at that, at one place, it says 1.5 feet less than the 20 feet, which would be 18 and a half. And on the other case, I found it said, the submission indicates it's a 16 and a half feet from the line, which would make it a three and bring it down to a 3.5 foot. So if you want to proceed now, but I just think you can refer to your plans and tell us about it if you want to briefly.
Okay, yeah, so I had spoke with Brittany about that discrepancy, because I think that I might have been confused as to what the actual setback was and how I delineated. So let me just tell you really quickly. It is a Generac 22 watt natural gas generator. If we were to be able to place it where I'm asking permission to place it, because it's right near my garage, the zoning would allow me to, so there's no windows or doors there, I'm able to put the generator 18 inches from the house. So it would be 18 inches from the house, that's where the generator would sit. And the generator itself is 25 inches. So if I were to take a look at my property line and I went all the way to where the exact generator is, it would be about 16 and a half feet from the property line neighbors. Because initially, I had said 18 and a half because I was only allowing for the space from the house to the generator, but not adding how, you know, adding the width of the generator itself. Does that make sense?
Well, what I'm understanding is if I can cut to the end of it, we're talking about going to a variance. Will you be, will the generator be 16 and a half feet from the property line or 3 and a half feet?
It'll be 16 and a half feet from the property.
Okay, yeah, now, okay. So the variance you're looking for is really instead of 20 feet, 16 and a half feet?
That's correct.
Is there any kind of an issue or a problem with it being too close to a house from a safety or a hazardous issue?
So, no. It depends on where you place the generator. It near the house, so if the generator is placed outside of a window or a door or an air passageway, it would have to be at least 36 inches away from the house. Because of this exact location that we want to place it and the fact that it's on the side of a garage and there is none of that obstruction, we're able to put it 18 inches from the house. And that's the safety guideline, according to my plumbing and electrical contractor. And we've also had Khan Edison come out, their representatives, to the field to also address the gas capacity for the, the gas coming into my house. And we also like, because we, you know, we were trying not to have to go for a variance. It makes sense to put the generator where we're proposing, because that's where the gas line is. That's where the electrical line comes in, that's where our HVAC equipment is. When we spoke to Khan Edison during that field visit, they did say that we needed to have a separate line for the generator, so we would have to upgrade our capacity. We proposed some ideas to them, we had suggested, is there a possibility to put the gas line to the right-hand side of the house? So we could run the gas line and we wouldn't have to ask for a variance because we would put the generator on that side. One, Khan didn't agree with that, they wouldn't do it for us. And two, it didn't really make a lot of sense, because then the generator would just be sitting. If you have a picture of the survey, it would be sitting sort of kind of in the middle of that passageway. And you can't tell from the survey, but my neighbor to the right of me is on Oriente Avenue. So that hedge line is their backyard, so the generator would be like sitting in there, like close to the back, to the backyard. So we considered all of that. And that's why we thought this would be, you know, the best place to, to, to put it. From safety reason, from annoyance to the, to the neighbors, just sort of in line with where all of the utilities are being sent to the house, as well as where the other equipment sits.
Okay, I'm looking, do you have a placement of it? You have, oh, you have the generator listed on there, I see.
I may have.
New generator pad, pad, and will the pad go beyond the distance? I was, I thought you, just for your own sake, it seems to me you're, you're cutting every inch. I mean, I would almost recommend six inches, just because the otherwise, you're going to have a variance and the building department may go out and say, I'm sorry, you did not meet that.
Right, I don't know the answer to that question. I'm assuming the pad would be the exact same size, but you're right, I might need to. Because if you, if I add it up, it'd be 18 inches from the house plus 25 inches would put me at 43 inches. I think my setback in that location is 21. So 21 less, say, three. Yeah, so maybe I should, I should say 16 feet.
Are you saying it's approximately 16 and a half feet off the property line? I think if you said 16. Okay, I don't know what the other board members have about it, but I just think, I hate to have you go through something and the board take the time to do this, and then you end up having to come back because someone will say, I'm sorry, we can't give it to you.
Okay, all right. That makes sense.
All right, is there anything else you want to, you do, it's on a pad, but you don't know the, the pad would be within that confines of that location? Did you have anything you wanted to add to it besides your application that you wanted to speak to now before the board asks you question?
Well, I did want to speak to the fact that we did, I have looked at different angles. I know that, you know, I don't want to take up time or, you know, ask for a variance if it's not necessary, because I do have other places on my property. I have property. The only other location that we could put it would be behind the house to the right of the pool equipment. And again, there are windows there and we'd have to stack it kind of in the corner. And again, that would not be great for my neighbors, because the neighbor behind me also is on Oriente, and that's also their backyard. So I just wanted the board to know that we, we did consider all options. We, we know that variances are not something that, you know, people take lightly, and it's not that they're given so easily. And we just think that this is really the best location, and we did look at all of our options.
I'm sorry.
Also, not to mention, if we did want to put it outside of that location, just say, in the back of the house, the backyard or to the side yard, we would have to run a gas line under the crawl space. I can tell you exactly what my contractor had said. To run wiring and gas servers through the crawl space and out the back of the house under the deck, then surface mounted over to the generator. So I think that would be, you know, definitely more disruptive and I can't say that it would be a safety issue, because I don't know, I'm not, I'm not an electrician, but certainly running more wires would be.
Okay, now, just, just one thing, you're, the photographs that you've submitted and that you've marked, one of them indicates the generatively placed in a location against the house. However, just to clarify, it's not going to be, it will not be against the house, it'll be at least 18 inches, correct?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, so let's just, okay. Who are the property owners directly adjacent to that?
To the left or to the right?
Um, if I'm, well, I guess if I'm facing the generator, the proposed generator, who would be behind me? Well, there's two that are, they meet there, I think, right, almost?
Just know, it would only be the house to the left of me, which is Lawrence Weinstein, Mr. Weinstein. And his house actually is, his setback to his house is about where my setback is. So it's pushed, so it would not, that would not be his backyard at all. And his house actually is a little bit at an angle. So it's, his house is actually pushed back a little bit further. So that generator, that adjacent there, it would be his side yard, which is also sort of narrow. So not an area where there's a play equipment or a trampoline like my other neighbors. My neighbors to the right, they have a playground for their children as well as a trampoline that are along that hedge line, as well as my neighbors behind me, so.
Mr. Weinstein indicated whether he favors or disfavors this in any way to you?
No, I've been in, well, he's elderly for sure. And we've talked to him about, we've had to like take down trees and stuff like that. And I did say to him that we're thinking of putting in a generator, and he was like, that makes sense, Carol.
Any board members have any questions?
Yeah, I've got a few. So I have to say, we drove by your house, and when we were looking, my husband said, I assume the generator is going to be on the right because there's no room on the left. So when you look at the house, it really looks like you're going to be fairly close to the left. Generators make noise. And I mean, I'm assuming this is an emergency whole house generator, is that correct?
That's correct.
So it makes a fair amount of noise when it's on, which I realize is hopefully never, but you know, will happen. And so I don't understand why you're more worried about, it will be sick. So you are going to be 16 feet from your neighbor's side yard.
That's correct.
Very close to him, does he have windows on that side of his house?
Um, can you give me one minute? I don't, I think his house is at an angle, so.
Actively doing this, as you said, just Rob.
We're actively doing this.
Goes to the window and there's the neighbor. Robin, you might ask, I think.
There is, yeah, there, yes, Robin, there's, he does have a window there, but it's set back just a little bit, and it's.
So if you put it in the back or someplace else, how far would it be from the neighbor? I'm trying to understand, I, you should be able to put the, the the generator, I agree that you should be able to put the generator. The question that comes to my mind is, is this the best place to put the generator? Maybe on the right, you'd have to, you know, wherever you first said you'd have to run a line, obviously that won't work. But the other place you talked about, the rear yard, I guess essentially, how close would that be to your neighbor? Okay, I mean, obviously, you may not have done the dimensions, but more or less.
So if you if I were to put it to the back, you see this, okay, there's a 25 foot, 25, 24.9. The generator would have to be at least three feet from my house and to the right. So it would be about 16 feet also. And that is, that is exactly directly in their backyard.
Right, but to me, I'm not sure that makes a difference, because they can, you can avoid going into your backyard if there's a generator there, you can't avoid being in your house. So it's more of an imposition on the, on a window and a person in a house than it is on the fact that you've got a backyard. But the fact that it's 16 feet means that it's not any distant from that. Now, I always wonder about emissions from, besides noise, which there is a lot of, are there other emissions from these generators? I just don't know enough about generators.
I can't answer that question. I know that because it's natural gas and not propane, it's cleaner, and I know that when they test it, it's quieter. And the reason why we are going with the natural gas is because we actually own two electric cars, so it, it's.
Can you, does natural gas continue in, even if there's a power outage?
Yes.
You don't need something that pumps the natural gas into the, okay.
No, that's why.
Okay.
I just had to follow up on Robin, if I may, just ask you a question. The, these generally, do these get tested all the time? Is there like, they go on? How, how frequently does it go? Usually they want some kind of a timing system.
I think it's once a month, but this particular Generac is actually a quiet test. It has like a quiet test, so it won't make the same type of noise that you hear when a regular generator is on, that we're like familiar with. It's a test that's quiet, we wouldn't hear it.
And you can pick the time when it's set to do that, correct?
Yes, but it has to be, but it's, it has to be regular.
Yeah, I understand.
Regular, like, once a month.
The other.
Right, that, that was going to be my question too. I know that there's a minimum amount of use that these things have to get, which is probably at least once a month. But when it comes to how much noise it makes, I don't see it on the specs, but it should be, it should be somewhere. I mean, we only have the first page of the specs, but it, it should tell you what the decibels are when it's running in that decimal, it's very easy for us to check to see actually what that noise equates to, because these things are designed to be used in residential areas. And you can see right on the specs that it is in a sound attenuation enclosure, which could.
It's, it's already in one, Brian?
Yeah, it says it, it says it right on, it's sound attenuation enclosure. Because otherwise, these things wouldn't be very useful in a residential neighborhood. Do you happen to know the setback of the, the neighbor who would be closest to this? Is he 20 feet from the property line? I know, I know his house is at a bit of an angle, because I, I looked at Google Earth.
Yeah, I don't what his setback is, because I don't.
Between the two, he, he would be about 36 feet from the unit. But I would be very interested in what the noise level is, which this, this machine should give you, should give you the specs, the DB.
I can ask my, my electrical contractor if he has that information, or I could get that for you. So Brian, you would need the, the amount of decibels?
Yeah, model number again, 22?
Yep, 22W.
We might be able to look it up.
Yeah.
They're in stock and ready to ship. I will say this, I think Brian brings a very good point up, because I can tell you that for all the years, at least the past 15 to 20 years, I have a measuring yardstick for when the electricity goes out. And that's when I wake up from the generator noises of my neighbors, not mine, I don't have one. Never gotten one, but it's always interesting how I wake up and I go, what's that noise? Oh, electricity must be out.
It's true.
It really is funny, like, um, let's see here.
Do you need to know the setback for Mr. Weinstein's house? I don't. I'm trying to see. I understand what you're saying, because if his house is.
Seven, 67 dB is a 23 feet at normal operating load.
Okay, so it's definitely more than 23 feet.
Right.
And you said it's 63 dBs?
67.
67 dBs.
Yeah, at normal operating level, so I assume.
Right.
My marketing standpoint is probably a little loud. So let's see, is, normal conversation is 60 to 70, according to what I'm looking at.
Yeah.
Right. So 68 is a normal conversation, so you'll, I'll wake up to hearing people speaking.
Well, if you're within 23 feet, we're thinking that the neighbor is, is 35, 36 feet probably.
Plus, he's got a wall to his house.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
I mean, because this is a, this is a, I'm sorry. It's, it's a brand new unit, it's not, you know, it's not some of those standalone things that you buy at Home Depot, which are, you know, really tough to take.
You will only be utilizing this, aside from the testing period, which we can talk about in a minute, but you'll only be using this when the electricity is out, correct?
That's correct. The reason why we needed such a large one is because we, we have two electric vehicles.
Right, also, this will charge the vehicles.
If there was a power outage, and we, and we both work at home, my husband and I, but.
So it's got here. Actually, 60, I'm reading somewhere else now. It's got normal conversation is 65 and below, laughter is 60 to 65. Vacuum cleaner, vacuum cleaner and a hair dryer is at 70. All right, but this will just be on on a temporary basis anyway.
The difference is a generator can be on for two or three days at a time, depending on, depending on how long the electric outage is. And, and that for a neighbor, again, distance is important. And that could be loud over two or three days. By three days, the neighbor who, you know, it's going to be loud. I mean, if you've walked, if you walk by some of the areas where there's a lot of generators on a day, you know, on a day after the electric power is out, it's loud. The, the neighborhood gets very loud. So, you know, I think that looking at these and saying, oh, it's only this, and that's not so loud. I think if we're thinking about decibel levels, we need to think about this for the duration that it's going to be. Now, as I said, to me, they should be allowed to do it as an, as a general rule. The question is whether or not this is the best, only question is whether or not this is the best place and whether or not there's something else that we should, you know, be concerned about. But that's where the issue is. I'm a little concerned about the fact that if the neighbor is an elderly man and doesn't really understand what this means, again, you know, what is that going to mean for the, you know, somebody next door? So I don't know. Does, just, just where I'm thinking about some of this stuff.
No, I did, I did talk to him about it, and I spoke to his, okay, to his, his daughter as well as his caretaker. I've known him 22 years.
Okay. So. You just, okay. Charlie Gottlieb has now joined us, hi Charlie, good evening.
Everyone.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions or comments, any, any questions?
Question about the brush. Are there any rules about how close the generators can be to the brush? I see from the photograph that it seems to be next to a boxwood.
Right.
You know, I, I don't know the answer to that. It wasn't something that we considered, but I mean, we would move the boxwood if that was the case. I know that, you know, when he puts the pad down and he'll, you know, design it and bring down the, the line accordingly, so there could be movement along the house, not out. And if that was the case, we would move the boxwood. But I don't know that if that's an issue.
I, I think there are rules about how close the generators can be to, to to brush. It, and I get, it depends, I think, on the model of the generator. But I do think that is.
And that's something. And I will bring that up to him too.
Chair, Board, this is Dennis Drogen, the Building Inspector. So it's, it's three feet of clearance, and at the time of the inspection, we'll work on that. If, if sound is an issue, and it deters from making a decision, some masking could probably be put in front, as long as the homeowner feels fit, and they're allowed to do that. They could put a shield fence in front, there's a lot of product that's out there that they could use to mask it, and along with, you know, evergreens and hedges and so forth. Is it, is the position, just since I'm, you know, making statement, the position of having it in the front of the house next to the driveway and getting that variance, I think is a good idea, you know, it's good for fire services. So, you know, if anything ever does happen, it's right there, it's accessible for the apparatus to get to. And it's natural gas. Any other questions the board or homeowner has for me?
I know, thank you, thank you for that input, Dennis. If.
The only thing I would just want out of that, you, the board is not designing this. So that you're saying that, you know, you've got to be, you're within that four foot, four and a half foot range that we talked about.
I've seen that.
And that's where you have to be, assuming the board would have given the variance. Right? Okay. I mean, unless you, unless you're not sure and you want to rethink it, that's a different thing.
No, 16 feet is good.
Okay.
In that, in that area, yep.
Okay, the 16 feet would bring you, would be the variance, would then be a variance for what, for four feet, right?
Well, it's 21 feet there. Well, it's twenty-one feet there, so is that.
Well, if you had sixteen feet and it's twenty-one.
But the requirement is twenty.
Twenty, yeah, right. So you it four feet effectively, yeah. We added a foot.
Okay, yep.
You don't want to have that. We'd like seeing you here, but you know, if we were, if board were inclined to give this, we you should add a little buffer and so you're not back here because.
Absolutely.
All right, um, does anyone else have any questions in the applicant?
I was just wondering whether um Dennis could just confirm, given that we had the the question about the distance, whether Dennis could confirm that indeed it is, you know, per the building department's measurements, is sixteen feet from the property line.
So the generator, to my knowledge, has has rotated on this property um three to four times and questions have been asked. So the position in the front where it is, um, I believe she was asking for sixteen and a half. Uh, now we're now she's at sixteen. So if it's there, that's that's the variance that you would grant. Um, the the clearance behind the unit, um, so if you have, if you have, if you're looking at it directly straight on, the rear of the majority of generators require a minimum of eighteen inches. And then to the right, to the left, and the front requires three feet of clearance. So if if it's resting um, parallel to the house, you know, the back is directly to the garage, you know, she wouldn't need any more than eighteen inches there. And we'll be fine. The pad, um, if once poured at a concrete, you know, they can go two inches more, three inches more on each side. Would it go into a setback if she was at sixteen and a half? Perhaps, but you know, now, you know, she's looking for sixteen. Um, and if the pad that comes with the generator, it's almost exact. I think it is a half an inch overhang on a typical interact generator. So I I think I think the homeowner will be in a good place uh with sixteen feet. Um, and that's any masking and whatnot would be permitted, um, you know, uh, outside the setback. You know, so we don't have any issue with that, you know. Um, but if anything was to be obstructed, you know, anything larger, something comes in, then that would go to B A R, but I don't think we're looking at anything that's going to be over ten thousand dollars. Um, and if it was a, you know, a six-foot fence to uh direct the sound upward, um, we would require a fence permit for that if it was enclosing the yard, but if it's one piece of trellis, the building department wouldn't require a permit to put in a uh a a small trellis that's masking the generator.
Well, the board may, unless the board, if the board were considered, the board may condition it upon everything being within that range, meaning the generator and any sound attenuation and connections, et cetera. Which shouldn't be a problem. No, there was.
If the board decided that they wanted me to um to to put some sort of masking in, then it would be difficult for me to determine, right? Like at that point, how much of a variance I would need because I wouldn't know what you guys would be asking.
Okay. But the variance that you're now asking for is enough for you to have the sound attenuation cabinetry and the pad and everything, correct?
I don't know.
Well, then. Okay.
If if I may, the the generac cabinet that's on it, um, everyone else in the village of Mariner currently has that same cap.
When I moved to me. Dennis, you got silent. We can't hear you.
Just raise your hand, Dennis. Can't see you, can't hear you.
Sorry about that.
Family.
Um, all right. Housing of the generator um is, I mean, we have this twenty-two KVA, twenty-four KBAs all throughout the the village. They're everywhere. We don't traditionally ask any more additional sound masking unless there's complaints that come from the neighbors and we get a decimal reading. Um, I'm sure the neighbors and everybody would be more than uh and perhaps even asking for an extension cord if they don't have a generator, if there's sound, so they'll let them know. But as for our code enforcers, we have not had to do any enforcing due to generator noise um in the village with the exception of one property, and that generator is the size of a car. I don't know the exact uh horsepower on it. But, you know, it's there. It's going to provide safety for the resident. There's nothing that we would need more. The the housing that surrounds the generator should be good enough.
Okay. Any other board members have any questions regarding this matter? Is there anyone here from the public that has any questions? Comments? Melissa? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, um, well, is there one? Someone want to move to close the hearing?
I'll move to close the hearing.
And Brian, is there a second on that, please? And I'll second it. Okay, Robin? This is on the motion to close.
Yes.
Okay, Robin, Meg?
Yep.
Okay, Greta?
Yep.
And Brian?
Yes.
Yes, I vote yes. So the hearing is closed. Thank you very much. And we'll get back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, have a nice day. Yeah. The next matter we have is the application regarding seven hundred Baldwin Place. It's an area variance request to expand an existing second floor and enlarge a front entry platform. Rear yard setback of thirty feet, and they propose, I believe it's thirteen is is the applicant here on seven hundred Baldwin?
Yep, I just promoted.
Okay. That's very nice of you.
Before, David, just before, I'm going to forget this, and I I this is just something for Brittany. One of our requirements is that they provide, you know, neighborhood uh maps and drawings that show the neighborhood, and I noticed both this, neither this nor the first applicant provided that. So if you would in the future, please make sure that they provide all of the, I mean, if you can, and again, I don't know, um, if you can, can you make sure that they provide all the required materials and submittals?
Yeah, what what was it though specifically? I'm sorry.
Um, they're supposed to provide like, you know, like from Google Maps or, you know, the air view of the.
Oh, oh, aerial view of that, yeah.
How close the neighboring properties are to them or how they fit on their lots compared to the particular lot ad issue.
So that's particular, Robin, that's a very good point. Thank you. And it's also very helpful here because this is by ninety-five, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Backs up to ninety-five.
All right, I will. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening.
Hi, can you hear me?
And now we can hear you. Before, I thought you couldn't, but now we can, so that's.
Okay, um, this is Fred, Fred Grippy. I'm the architect for Alan and Eileen Picker at seven hundred Baldwin Place. Um, is it possible to share my screen? Can I share my screen?
Yeah.
Yes, you are allowed to.
Okay, is that visible?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so let me just blow this up a little. Okay, so we're seeking an area variance to expand the second floor, which requires a thirty-foot rear setback. So we're asking for a sixteen-point-seven-five-foot variance, making the rear setback over here thirteen-point-two-five feet. Um, as you can see on the site plan, basically, you know, over fifty percent of the house is in the rear setback. Um, so there really isn't any other way to to build an addition on this house um without a variance, uh, because of the nonconformities and the way the house is sighted on the lot.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we also feel that, you know, aesthetically and feasibly, this is the best solution to provide the space um that the family needs. So this was the existing roof line here, and we're just basically raising the roof up and carrying it all the way, all the way to the back. So if you look at the right side elevation, this is that peak that's going up, and it comes all the way to the back of the house to where that setback would be. This is the left side of the house. So it's it's basically a uh the same as the as the as the right side. Um, it's just the other elevation. And uh, let's see, did I miss the rear? I missed the Mr. Rear. Must have been here somewhere. Yep, sorry. So this is the rear, which, like I said, duplicates the front. This roof just comes all the way back to the rear. And um, this basically is this is the same footprint as as the first floor. We're not coming out any further. Uh, if you look at the the first floor plan, what we're basically doing here is this basically is where the second floor addition is going, right over there. And as we go to the second floor, oops, sorry. This is the existing second floor, which um has two bedrooms up here. You know, it it's basically an attic. I mean, it's being used with two bedrooms, but these walls here are only five feet tall. Um, it's really not that usable. There's a big area here, but again, it's very low headroom. So all we're really doing is raising raising this space. You know, creating um a bedroom with a walk-in closet and um a master, a master bedroom. If I could go to, let's see. The photos, you talked about the aerial photos. This is a uh an aerial photo here. Um, it's it's very wooded, and there's a lot of room in between the houses. This is the throughway. You can see a little bit better, a little clearer here. Again, it's right in here in between the garage and the uh the left side of the house, the throughways in the back, so it's really not, you know, butting up against anybody. And this other house is probably, I'm going to say eighty-five feet away. At least, there's a whole, there's a whole lot in here uh that I guess they own. It's a big, it's a big oversized lot. So um, if we're coming up over here in the front, and just so you can see in the back that, you know, it's this, it's this area right, right over there that um that we're building that that addition off the back of the house. You'll see it like in in this area here. So, I mean, that's about the extent of it. Um, like I said, we're not, we're not really, you know, going over uh, we're not really increasing the footprint of that area that's over here because it's it's there already on the first floor. So, you know, we really feel there's no adverse effect or impact on the neighborhood. And I believe the Pickers have spoke to some of the neighbors, and they really didn't object to this at all. Um, I think they're on, they could maybe uh speak about that. Um, but that's basically the uh extent of the of the project. Go back to that first. So, again, like I said, this is right here. The whole house, I I would imagine that this property got cut when they they built the throughway. Uh, I don't know when that was, but if you have any questions, be glad to answer them.
Okay, any board members have any questions?
Yeah, um, a couple of questions. Do you have the original survey on the property from when the house was built?
The original survey when the house was built?
Yeah.
Um. I mean, I have this survey.
Well, that's the, that's brand new.
Let me uh. I.
There there's a one-story, um.
Hi, Eileen Picker. I just wanted to say we bought the house um six years ago as a foreclosure. Then when we bought the house, there was no survey on file, and I guess they kind of, um, we were under this understanding that the house was built before some code was put out and ninety-five itself, so that it was kind of like a grandfathered-in situation of that line.
Right, well, actually, that's that's very helpful because uh, you know, we're trying to, one of the things we're probably going to deliberate on is whether or not this is pre-existing non-conforming um i- in terms of your setback, because the house uh, it it doesn't seem like it has any variances and and uh, you know, you're already not within the regulated setback. Uh, the other question I had is you have a one-story piece of the house, which is behind where you intend to raise the roof. Uh, do you know whether or not that's original or whether or not that was added on at some point? Or maybe you could tell us what that is?
Well, yeah, so it's um like a mudroom in the back and uh the second half of our kitchen. And as we understood it, that was not part of the original house. It was an addition. Um, but again, was added on before ninety-five existed. Um, so at the time, it was a legal addition.
Before ninety-five, you mean the highway?
Yeah.
So do you have, do you have like a time period? Like when? When was that? Was it fifties, sixties, or?
So that, we don't know, but the house was, is nineteen fifty that it was built, and when we bought the house, we did have to, um, we did work on it, so we did have permits through the town, the village. And at that time, that's when we were told like this information, but nothing concrete on paper or anything like that.
Okay. All right.
Um, I have a question, which is, um, how, when when you look at the drawings, it looks like the second floor is going to be enormous, really high, like towering over everything. So how high is the existing rooftop, peak of the roof? How high will this be? And how high will your proposed second floor be?
Um, well, it is approximately five feet taller than the existing ridge that that is there now. Um, as far as the height, it meets, you know, it it is. Uh, let's see. Um, the height, it's a thirty-five feet maximum, we're at twenty-three point five eight.
So you're going maybe up to twenty-eight. You said five feet taller.
No, this is what, this is what it's going to be. This is proposed.
Oh, I have to tell you, your drawing gives a very.
Well, but like, well, it's because it's at the midpoint, you know, the way you do the height is from the midpoint of the raft. Okay, it doesn't go to the peak.
I'm just telling you, it looks very long, very high.
Well, it really, it really isn't, to be quite honest.
That's why I asked. Obviously, twenty, as as whatever that was, was not very high, but your drawing looked high. Questions came up, okay. Now, what are you doing in the front? You haven't discussed that at all.
So there's an existing porch in the front of our house. It's about four feet by five feet, and we try to extend it slightly to give us a sitting area on the front porch as well.
That doesn't require a variance, so that's within the.
Oh, it doesn't require variance.
No, no.
I thought it, I thought, okay.
No, no, it's 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 thirty-eight feet back.
Okay.
The front setback is uh twenty-five feet.
Okay.
It's just, it's just everything back here from from this line on requires the variance. All all this uh doesn't require a variance.
Got it, okay.
And within the F A R and and all the other setbacks and and requirements.
I think I read somewhere um in the documents that there was a kitchen extension in two thousand fifteen. Um, did that not require a variance? That was.
There was a kitchen remodel. We the we never changed the footprint of the house. All the walls were here. We just re redid the kitchen that was existing in two thousand fifteen when we bought the house.
Okay.
I have a question for council. Charlie?
Yeah.
Um, we get three forty-two dash one hundred. Because the adjoins ninety-five, um, are we required to send a notice to the state or the county? Not sure if that's true or not, but it's three forty-two dash one hundred in the code.
Um, I can check in on that.
We did, we did notify. They were, they were on the list of people we had to notify, so we sent it.
I'm impressed. Very good.
But to be honest, we, they didn't even open it. They just, you know, they sent the back. But to be honest, we, they didn't even open it, they just, you know, they sent the back.
Just just trying to dot the i's and cross the t's.
We did, we did send it.
Great.
Problem solved.
I just did a little Googling, um I ninety-five was built somewhere in the, you know, like fifty fifty-five to fifty-seven, so if um and later, so if the house was built in in nineteen fifty, then it was definitely a pre-existing house, house was there, then I ninety-five was built.
Okay, did anyone have any questions regarding this? Are we waiting for something?
Nope, we're waiting to move on, maybe the public, we ask the public.
Yeah, okay, does anyone here have any, any members of the public who have any questions? Any other board member have any final questions at all or information requests? The applicant have anything further to add?
Uh, no, I think we we covered everything unless um I need to now have anything else to say.
Well, I guess I'd just like to say that, uh, you know, so we bought this house six years ago. Um at the time, it was just me and my wife and one child. Um we now have three. And we we love this town, we wanna make this our home for many years to come. Uh and this would go a long way in making sure that this property um is what it needs to be for the size of our family.
Okay, is there an application to motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close.
I'll second.
Okay, can can we take down the sharing of the screen, please? Okay, thank you. Okay, there's a motion and a second on the application, okay, Meg?
Yes, close.
Excuse me, uh Robin?
Yes.
Uh Greta?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, and this hearing is closed, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
The next matter and the next application is um on twelve sixty Flagler Drive. This is the applicant here. Can you elevate them if they are?
Yep, I'm promoting them now.
Okay, this is
Your new folks, can you all hear me okay?
Yeah, hi, good evening. How are you? This is Okay, good, thank you. And this is an application, you have an application here for an interpretation. Which would be, your interpretation is that you don't need an area variance as a matter of right, you can build as a matter of right, and you cited some cases for that. And your alternative is that if the board were inclined not to agree with that position that we want an area variance. Okay, I think that's the way you put it. Um um if you wanna start, I mean, I've taken a look at some of the cases, but why don't you begin?
Sure, yes, thank you, um, good evening. Kristen Motel from the law firm Cuddy and Fader here on behalf of Frank and Nina Cooper, who are the applicants and owners of twelve sixty Flagler Drive. Um they're actually here tonight, so Brittany, I would ask if you wouldn't mind also elevating Frank and Nina so that they can join us here.
Yeah, Brittany, that'd be fine, thank you.
Is it Frank Cooper?
Yes, yes, thank you. I'm also here tonight is Rick Yestat from Yestat Architecture and Design, uh the architect for the proposed renovations. Um so, board members, as you're aware, we have requested an interpretation that the area variances are not required for the proposed improvements to the second floor here. Um as well as requesting the area variances in the alternative. Uh I'm sure that you're also aware that there was correspondence received today from the neighbors at twelve eighty Flagler uh requesting an adjournment in this application. Uh we would certainly like the opportunity to respond to comments that were received in that submission. Um so we would also request that the matter be discussed tonight and then also continue to the March meeting. Uh so
Just a second, um have we all gotten a copy of that?
I haven't seen it.
I haven't
That was forwarded to the board this afternoon when it was received.
Yeah, I s- I saw the emails.
Yep.
I didn't see it, I'm on the another website.
No, it's not, it was not posted, it was sent directly to the emails, as it was
I'm on my two email addresses that the board in theory has, and I don't see it, so I'll go back and look again.
Yeah, it was sent.
Okay.
Okay, so
Well, do you wanna, what do you wanna, what do they actually say, why don't you? I mean, I guess there's an initial question we should take up, there's three questions. One is, what just came in and do you wanna defer and put this on together with that? Or if not, and the second question is, do you wanna proceed with the interpretation, speak to that first and separately, or do you wanna do the both at the same time? I mean, I mean, both would be done the same evening.
I I have a question, since we did not get the neighbors um since I did not get the letter and I just looked at the at the three email addresses that arguably the village could use, and it's not on any of them, um could could someone read it or say exactly what it says?
Brittany, can you send that to us?
Let me just check mine as well, let's see, I didn't get it, but I'm gonna check my um
Meg or Greta or Brian, did any of you get it?
Yeah, I did.
Could you email?
Whose email did it come from, let me just search, who did it come from?
I'll forward it again, it was sent to the Board of Appeals with everybody's email listed underneath it.
But who would be on the 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 sending side, the name?
It's from me.
Okay.
I don't, I don't see it, was it sent to the to our inboxes, our Gmail addresses, Brittany?
Your V O M, your Village of Maranick emails.
Yeah, I'm on the Village of Maranick email and
It was sent at noon.
Okay.
Um, so Chair, if I if I may just request this, I think it would be very, very helpful for us to give a brief summary on what is being proposed here. Um have Rick walk you through some of the plans and some photographs of the existing home and the surrounding area. And then to continue this into March so that we could make a submission that addresses what we received today, you all will have time to review it. Um but in the meantime, I I think, you know, our application thoroughly addresses the interpretation and the area variances. And it would be very helpful just to give a brief summary to this board and take some initial comments, if you're willing to do that.
Well, the only issue I have is that if the other people aren't here and and you're going to adjourn it for them I we just don't wanna go through everything twice, I mean, not suggesting it's not worthy of going through twice, but um, does someone have that, I don't have that, and I didn't, Brittany, could you send that to one of my other email addresses, please?
Same with me, because I don't have it.
Yeah, I don't have a V O M.
And I'm on the V O M website.
I just forwarded it again, I don't know if there's a glitch, but I will try something else.
I also just
Well, no, it wouldn't be again, it would be Brittany, it would just be to the regular email.
I just sent it again, Robin, to Dave as well, just in case it was an email issue, see if it worked from mine.
You sent it to the V O M address?
No, I sent it to your Gmail, Robin.
Oh, okay.
And mine as well, my Gmail?
Uh
That might take a minute or two, so I'll give it a minute or two, because not on the, it's not on the V O M.
Which is it, a minute or is it two minutes, Robin, please?
Dave, I sent it to both of your emails.
And can you send it to me also?
Yeah.
As well.
Sure.
Story of the email and being remote.
Fine, did you get
Can't we ever explain this, what it's like in the future to somebody? Um
So Chair, given that this is a public hearing and there's other members of the public that may or may not be here to comment on the application. Uh do we would request just uh five minutes to give a summary and a presentation?
You've indicated that, no, no one's objecting to that, I was, I'm not saying no to that.
Okay.
I'm just saying, I'm just waiting to see that, I would at least like to have the context, uh so we understand what it is we got. I'm not gonna, we can't agree to adjourn something because somebody wrote a letter that we don't even read. That would be silly. I don't wanna be unfair to anybody, but ah, no, I didn't get that, no. Check another email.
All right, I've I've now got it, but there's no, but the letter doesn't open, so I have the email attaching it, at least on the V O M website, I have the email attaching it, but the the document itself didn't open.
Well, look, just to give you, just to give you a little bit a- about it. Uh the letter, uh one of the letters is fourteen pages long. Uh from the firm of uh Minzer and Mouch, P L L C. Uh which not only, you know, goes through case law and uh and such, but it also gives breakdowns and elevations and views from one window to another uh window, so these are these are pretty extensive um letters that I think you would need time to review, it's not it's not just two paragraphs from an individual.
Why aren't they here, Brian, why isn't, is the, is there
I got it. But I I got it through the vomi.
No, no, I'm saying, I'm saying, but that app, but if somebody wants to adjourn, I would have think that the proper procedure should be, it's nice that they did a full letter. But it would be the type of thing they should at least be here and say
They are here and they're raising their hand, would you like me to promote?
Oh, I didn't, okay, no, I don't, I wanna see if I get this, I still haven't gotten the letter, Robin, you've gotten it?
Again, it came on the V O M website, but I can't open the letter, it doesn't open. And for whatever reason, it didn't come in from Charlie yet, so we'll let, we'll just have to wait.
Who, Charlie was sending it?
Would you like me to promote?
To you and me, at our
In a moment, in a moment, Brittany.
Okay.
Trying to get our hands on this first.
You know what, I think that, Dave, I think that the odds of getting our hands on it now are probably gonna take too long, and if, since the applicant is here or the, I mean, the opponent is here.
Okay, all right, so why don't we let the, the, yeah, let me ask you this. They, I assume the other, the party who wrote the letter wants to adjourn this matter? So they can make a, oh, hold on, I just got it, hold on, looks like I just got it. This is from Helen Mounch, just one second. Attach, please find a letter and for this evening. Hold on. Morning, relax. Well, all right, I I guess it it's a long, what's, was it? Oh, it's a letter with attachments and everything, okay. All right, um
And there's, and there's two letters, by the way, there's, there's one from both neighbors. So I don't know if you've seen the other one as well. But maybe the applicant wants time to absorb the letters and give some kind of
Yeah, aside from them, I mean, I'll, I'm gonna allow them to make a preliminary statement, but but I, do you, will you want time? Uh will the applicant want time to respond to this? We can read it later, but I mean, we we have not read it as a board.
Yes.
Would you want time for the March meeting to have this?
Yes, that would be our request, I think it would also be helpful tonight to get the board members' initial comments on
I said that, we're we're taking one at a time, I understand that, you said that, I said that you will have a few moments to do that, yes. And we can have you address something as well, okay.
Okay.
All right, so then I'm inclined to say this, what we'll do, I think, is we'll take, let's say briefly, you'll make a saving, I just don't wanna hear from person who wrote this letter, other than to say that they're gonna put it over, that they want the matter put over. If you wanna elevate them, so we can just take that up very quickly. Because I don't think we're gonna read a letter like this now and make everyone sit here while we practice reading it. And then be prepared to continue the hearing, I think, so, well, the applicant will certainly have the right to begin and speak. Um if you wanna just do that now, or do you wanna put the, I guess, yeah, why don't you just go ahead then?
I promoted them.
Oh, you, okay.
So Chair, would you like us to begin?
Well, did you promote them up, is there, is there somebody here, is Helen Mouch here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I I have not read this, you sent a letter dated today and we just received it. Uh some member may have received it earlier today. So do you want this matter, is your app, is your request that the matter be put over so you could address this?
Actually, no, our our request was that the, this public hearing be kept open. Because we received the materials, the uh, the members of the public received the materials on January twenty-seventh. The application package was about a hundred and fifteen pages. So we uh we we put in our initial comments. But we still are going through the materials in the application.
Okay, and the applicant doesn't object to this matter going over for you to address it then, but we're not, we're not gonna have an extensive beginning here, because what happens in that, I can tell you historically, is we'll end up doing two entire hearings and it'll all duplicate itself, but why don't we do this? So I'm gonna suggest that we're gonna allow the applicant now just to make a ten-minute presentation that gives an overview to everything. And and then the board has any questions or directions or comments, and then it'll go over to the March meeting. Prior to which, any further submissions can be made, and we can also take up this letter that was not, that you've written. Okay? Is that the board?
That's fine, Mr. Chair, with me.
Okay, is the board, are the members comfortable with that as an approach?
Yes.
Okay. I just don't wanna have two long hearings on the same thing, because that's what happens invariably. Go ahead then, okay, why don't you proceed, Meg?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So the property at twelve sixty Flagler Drive is located within the R twenty-one family residential zoning district in the Edgewater Point community. Uh that, the property joins Long Island Sound, and it's currently improved with a single-family home that has a second story. Um as well as a garage and some other residential amenities, and the home was constructed in nineteen sixty. So it predates uh some requirements that are now applicable to single-family homes. Uh namely, the lesser and combined side yards. Um the applicants are proposing to alter the existing second floor of the home to make some modifications to the roof lines and the dormers. Uh those renovations will be within the maximum permitted height for the zoning code. And also will be permitted um by the maximum height that's allowed within the Edgewater Point community. So I note that that maximum height is even less than what the village zoning code permits within this district. Uh the renovations will all be within the confines of the existing building footprint. And the property features uh extensive landscaping, which includes buffers to the north and southern side yards. Um I would also like to just have Rick walk through the, some of the drawings, if if you want to very briefly share your screen. Um and then I'll I'll bring up a few more points and we'll turn it over to the board for comment.
Sure. One thing, before you go on, if you could, just, you mentioned the edgewater requirements, those are private requirements that are not the village's requirements, correct?
Correct, those are recorded restrictions.
But they're not ours to enforce?
Correct, yeah, absolutely, I'm just letting you know.
That's, thank you, and I just wanna clarify that.
Okay.
I understand, it's like a covenant, it's it's between you, you may have very solid contractual rights or you may not.
Exactly.
Right, I understand, I just wanna make clear, thank you. Chair, if you wanna just give us a very brief overview?
Sure, I'll share a screen.
By all means, thank you.
Okay. Uh let's see. Well, just uh excuse me for a minute, I'm looking for the files. For some reason, we're not seeing them. Yeah. This uh
This, uh, let's see. I, I am on my third PC station tonight, so apologies.
All right, take another minute or two, you'll figure it out.
The files are open, but I don't see them to share. Try it this way. Okay. Can everybody see that?
If you might have to.
I can, you have to, I can see just the.
I think you have to, right now, and then share the new window of that, after you brought the document up.
Can you see that?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay, this is, we'll just take a short view of some of the existing conditions. So this is the overview. This is the location of the site. This is the aerial. This is the applicant's property, 1260, the neighbor, 1240 and 1280. This is from across the water. 1260, this is the applicant's location. The neighbor on the left and the right. And then walk down the street, this is the left-hand neighbor, 1240. This is from the beach. The applicant's property in this location. This is an aerial from the rear. So you can see, and you'll see more images of this, but there's quite a robust planting barrier on both properties, on, on this side of the property. And then on the right side, beautiful deciduous trees here, a row of them that are quite robust also. And then these overgrown beautiful junipers in that location. Again, the applicant's property, 1260, 1260, 1280, the planting buffers here and here.
Bad, okay. You listen to Daddy?
This is the front of the house, the neighbors from the street. This is the rear, which we'll talk about the, this dormer location. This is looking south. So the, again, you see the robust planting that exists on both sides of the property line. This is looking west. Then the looking north, no, you see the, the juniper and the beginnings of the row of the deciduous trees on the neighbor's property in this location, a row of four, continuing to the front. You see them again. It's a little hard to see without the leaves, but there's four of them. And some new planting, the side of the house. This, we wanted just to show the kind of the context of the character of the neighborhood, that part of the neighborhood that does exist. Some of the smaller properties, 1357, 1347, 1337. This is from the front, so you can see these conditions are in character, you know, have a certain character in the neighborhood. This is from the rear, so you see two and a half-story structures that are existing here in this location, 1357 terraces at all different levels, open terraces. Let's look at the plans, the site plans briefly. Now, do you see that? I'm sorry. Did that show up?
I think again, you have to, and then share your new window.
Got it. Okay. Let me get back to the first page. So this is the proximity plan. Let me blow that up a little bit. You can see this, correct?
Yes.
Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay. So this is the subject property in this location. The front, the distance to the front, the structure to the front is 203 feet to the, the structure, the neighbor to the left is 144 feet. And then the neighbor on the right is about 29 feet. Look at the site plan. Existing and proposed. Okay, so this is the existing structure, and as was previously stated, the the proposed structure, see, I'm making this a little bigger. The proposed structure takes that same perimeter. You'll see the side yard setback lines are on the left in this location, 25 feet. On the right, 20 feet in this location. So these hatched areas are the pre-existing non-conforming, you know, both in in the existing site plan and in the proposed site plan. The second floor, so with that. Well, just generally, again, this is the first floor that shows the setback lines in this location. The hatch is a pre-existing non-conformance. The hatch on this side is the pre-existing non-conformance. And it's, it's good to note that the existing staircase in this location is within the pre-existing non-conformance. So part of that staircase is sitting in the side yard. So creating some, some difficulty for the applicant as he's trying to improve the house. So the in the elevations, this is the front. So again, you'll get an idea. Get an idea of where the setback lines occur in front. And also importantly, look at the So this is the front door. This is the location of the existing garage. This is the guest bedroom, which we'll talk about in a minute. That's over the guest, that's over the garage. This is the side yard setback line. So it's eight feet, three inches, you know, which is existing. So this is the existing face of the house. This is the setback line. On the right-hand side, this is the setback line. It's two feet, one feet, two inches in the front. Again, this left, this right-hand line is the existing house. And then this, so this area is pre-existing non-conforming.
Thank you, Rick.
Then, yeah, so then this is an important feature. This is the side. The right-hand side. So you see that we've been talking with the neighbor about various window locations and so forth. And there were some, some back and forth. So we are now showing just one window on that side of the, the side of the building. And then secondly, important to note, this dotted line is the existing roof of the guest room over the garage. So we are improving the pre-existing non-conformance in this area by removing that roof and setting, making the guest bedroom smaller. So it's smaller than the existing by this, this dimension. In the rear, similarly, these are the setback lines, so the pre-existing non-conformance on the left, the pre-existing non-conformance on the right. This also one thing to note, which is that if you see this dotted line, that is the face of the existing building. And then at the second floor, we are setting back further than the existing dormer. So that line goes back. And then again, over the garage, you see where we've improved the pre-existing non-conformance in this location.
Great. Thank you, Rick. I, I think that, that gives a pretty good summary of what we're proposing to do. And I, as the board members can see, this is really just some alterations to the second story entirely within the existing building envelope. And just to provide a little bit of context before we leave for the board members and some history, I do just want to make you aware that the applicant has for quite some time been at this project and has made numerous revisions to what they're proposing based on discussions with their neighbors that have been going on since last summer. So I do just want to take note of that, that there's been a lot of discussions and a lot of back and forth and concessions and changes to what you're seeing today versus what was, what was originally proposed for the project. So at this time, we'd be happy to take comments from board members before we see you again in March.
Well, if the board has, you're talking about on the, on the area variance application portion, correct?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Wait, a minute, I have a question.
Yeah, I think that it would, I mean, I think it's best on that area variance thing, since that's a site matter to address that.
David, they have an application for an interpretation.
I know, but I'm talking about the air grass this second. I'll come to that in a minute.
But if we, if we decided that the applicant, that if we decided that, in fact, they were correct on their interpretation argument, then the area variance argument would be moot. So shouldn't we consider the interpretation today, rather than or hear the interpretation? And I mean, we have to consider that one first, or we say we're not going to consider it at all, because there's no point considering an area variance until we've decided that they, their interpretation is wrong, if that's what we decide.
Good. Well.
That would be that we're deliberating.
One of the things I was just saying, one of the things I was just saying, Rob, was that I asked if it was, speaking of the area variance, I think the area variance was a matter that should be put over and considered that. Now, with regard to the interpretation, I did have some comments on that for them, but I also think that the people who your adjacent neighbors or whatever, whoever is writing that letter, which I have not read, 14-page, whatever, and I think they may want to opine on that and speak to that. But I think that with regard to the interpretation, I just had some very, a couple of very basic points to make that I was, hope you go to dress it the next time when this is on. As I think that's the cases you've cited, and you, Marcellus and the other one, don't stand for the proposition that because you're in a footprint, you can somehow, you don't need the variance. I think what they both stand for is that the Board of Appeals in making their interpretation, made a reasonable one. In one of those cases, the applicant was making in a similar statute, a similar code as we have, the applicant was replacing something with a lower building, and they said, well, you're going less, so you don't need one. The, the other one is unclear, I guess it's the Marcellus. There, the court does use language that says there's nothing, that was the board, in both cases, the court says you have discretion, the board has the discretion initially to interpret the code. There's a third case that I just bumped into by jeopardizing yours, and that was in Spazato versus, no, not Spazato, it's the, I'm sorry, it's a third department case which talks about these, and it's the zoning board of appeals, Brock versus the zoning board of appeals. And there, in a similar code, they basically did say that you can look at the circumstances of what's changing, and it doesn't, the board has that. And I would just point out, you should be addressing that when you raise this. Also, you should bear in mind that it has been this board's position for, to my knowledge, 20 years plus, 25 years plus, that it's not a footprint issue. And then these cases say that, and this board's always taken the position. What this board is, to my knowledge, always taken the position is that says, you look at the modification and the mass. So for example, simple example might be if somebody was, had a setback that was, they weren't compliant with, it was non-conforming, and it was a five-foot-high, something maybe five or 10 feet high. And that's what it was. And now they want to go and they want to add 20 feet on top of it, which would be conforming as to height. Well, it's a completely different mass. It's a completely different non-conforming than a, a simple low thing. So this board's always taken the position that if you're changing the mass of something or the size, it does. And the cases that you cite, I don't, one of the cases actually does say, no, the replacement is lower. And there, the neighbor said, no, but they have to get a variance. And the court said, no, they don't. It's the board made an interpretation, and we think there, that's fine, it's suitable. It doesn't bind us to that. I think you're asking this board to change the way it's, it's made many decisions. And I also think that you, you're, and I've briefed, and I read your papers briefly, and I read, I read the papers a while ago when I got them. They talk about a footprint being the key. I don't see that in the cases. The one case, Marcellus, does mention that it's within the footprint, but then says, well, there's no change of anything. I think that all they said there was, the board in that case had the discretion, and they're not going to turn that discretion around. Here, this board has a precedent of doing exactly what the other court did, and that is saying, well, if you're going to be making the intrusion, if you will, higher and more visible, then it shouldn't be. So if you want to address that, you can do it the next time on the area, on the interpretation. But Ms. Kramer makes a good point, and that is and that's why I'd asked you initially, if you want to just address the interpretation issue first. Because if you're successful on that, you don't have to consider the second portion. On the other hand, if you're not, then you come back and you start all over again then. So we've allowed other people to kind of go with both. And I, it's a little more tedious probably for the board as well as for you, but I don't know. It depends how hard you, I mean, it's up to you. If you said earlier, if you say, no, I want the interpretation, then I think we'd go along with that. But I think if you want both, I don't know. I don't see the interpretation. I don't see the merit to the interpretation. Obviously, I'm open to it, but from the cases I've read and the, the actual reading, I, because I was surprised when I read your papers. I said, oh, it's a footprint issue? That's interesting. No, they say that if that's what a board in one case wants to do, they won't reverse that. They'll allow that. They won't, because the board has discretion for the interpretation. But the other case was clearly one where they said, no, it's lower. And the other case in Queensberry was the opposite, third department was where it's similar, I would say, look, if it's going to be making some kind of a change in it, that's fine. It's going to be an increase in the degree of the, so it's, it's not just the setback limit. And I, I'll repeat this one time, because I think it's logical as well, and we've been correct all the time. Because if you're going to have a violation or a non-conforming use that literally could be a deck three feet high, you can't say, okay, now I've got the deck, it's non-conforming, now I can go and build up 20 feet. And I don't need a variance. I don't think that follows. I understand. It would be the same footprint, which is your argument, but I don't see the analysis of how that's not an enhancement of the non-conforming mass or the non-conforming aspect of it. And that's been the position of this board, to my knowledge, historically for I could say 25 years. Dating my board, but I don't know. But Rob, I, I think, unless you feel otherwise, I think they should be able to do both. I know what the board feels. Let's talk about it.
David, I agree with you on reading of the cases. To me, they were just courts upholding a reasonable. David, I agree with you on reading of the cases. To me, they were just courts upholding a reasonable determination by the ZBA. There was no decision on the facts, if you will. And I would point out, I would point out to the applicant that the application immediately before this on Baldwin Place was exactly the same thing, was an application to put a second floor where there was only a one-story building, and it was exactly the same thing because they are increasing the amount of stuff that is non-conforming. It was only an area of X by Y, and now it's two X by Y. So
Absolutely.
Before, it is consistent with what this board has done, certainly since I've been on the board, not as long as David, but for a while. And I, and there was no, I didn't see any, any valid, any argument provided by the cases that would support it.
Yeah, and I found that one case in the third department that was the opposite. But Ms. Mattel, I'm not suggesting you can't argue that and advance it. I'm just saying to you.
Thank you. We, we.
You know, I mean, you'll do what you want to do.
Thank you. Yeah. So, so we really appreciate that. We hear what you're saying. Given that the, the submission we just received today, which we haven't even had a full opportunity to review yet, does address some of the interpretation arguments. And given the board's comments, you know, we would ask to be able to address this interpretation and variances at the next meeting in whole. I think that's the most productive use of, of the, the next meeting and what's going on here tonight. And this way, you all will have a chance to have reviewed that as well.
Okay, one thing, because I, I, because I'm, I'm getting the sense here, we, we have a busy agenda in March as well, busier than this. Is that if you're going to be responding to some legal arguments or positions, it would be very helpful. And you've done a very fine job here in preparing everything in advance. I mean that, it was very helpful to have those cases and things as opposed to just coming in with them. If you could respond to them before the meeting, so we all have a sense of where the issues line up. Because you, you've done this. If they've taken on the interpret, I mean, it's easier on an interpretation to write and give it to the board in advance than it is necessarily on, you know, a more subjective variance type of feeling. So I think if you could, that would be very helpful for us because it would be nice, because I think Ms. Kramer is really correct in the sense, it makes sense to logically deal with that first. But maybe it's because I, you know, I just don't want to put it off. Otherwise, you're going to have one hearing on this, go back on the other. But why don't you raise that? Well, we can check, obviously, the board has the right when it takes it up next time after hearing the interpretation. It may say, you know, man, we need more time on that. We don't want to go forward. But I think we could probably do both. I don't know what Greta and Meg and Brian, what your feelings are on this.
Dave, I actually have two very quick questions about the project. Would it be appropriate to ask?
Yeah, they're quick.
Will there be work done on the first floor during this project?
Are you, are you referring to in, in conjunction with this, the proposed second story work? Because the, the applicant is proposing some interior first-floor renovations that, that do not require any, any variances, you know, just a building permit. So yeah.
But there, but there will be some work done on the first floor in order to accommodate the second floor, which makes sense depending upon what they're adding or how they're getting up there. The other question is, do you have an elevation certificate of the first floor? Because, you know, we're talking about you, you know, raising the second, the, the second level of the structure and staying within certain things. And that's all going to be relative to where it sits on the ground. Do you, do you have a base elevation for this house? Do you have an elevation certificate?
So I believe we do, and we have dealt with the building department previously because the applicants have done, like I, I mentioned, some other interior renovations to the home. And I believe that was prepared. But Rick, if you, if you're familiar with that and want to address it.
Yeah. We, we're, we're aware of the FEMA requirements. I think that's maybe what you're addressing. And we're in compliance with the FEMA directions. Their regulations, their guidelines. With regard to the first floor, it's existing. There, we're not elevating the second floor. The second floor remains at its current height. And, you know, under FEMA regulations, you're allowed to renovate an existing structure that's non-conforming. You, you know, I, I'm sure you guys are well aware that, you know, if, if we were building a new structure, it would have to be raised accordingly as you, as you're referencing relative to the base flood elevation. But in this case, it's an existing structure that's being renovated within the FEMA guidelines that allows the existing structure to remain.
And I will also note that obviously is a precursor to this application, which as, as village policy requires, the applicants have submitted the floodplain development permits, the building permits, and all of that's been reviewed by the building department, both for what we're proposing right now, and then also the, the prior interior renovations. So the building department has been reviewing that throughout the duration of, of this project.
I mean, did that answer your question, Brian?
My question was, what is the elevation?
Okay.
You have a top?
We, we, we would have to get back to you on, on that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good. Any other board members? Are we going to put this over now or does anyone have?
We had spoken about perhaps forming little teams of two to go inspect places that we're considering.
Why don't we take that up there?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Everybody can go to look at the site. We were talking about a whole different process, but I don't think right now is the time.
I don't know that we have access to the roadway, so that's why.
I went today and I said to the guy what I was doing and why I was there. I didn't even know, all I knew was the address. I didn't know the name of the property, and I didn't remember it at the time. I didn't bring that portion of the application with me. And he let me through. And I went and was able to, you know, I couldn't go, you know, I didn't bother trying to go into the house, but I did look at the property and the adjacent houses and the nearby houses. So you, we were, the guard did let us in. I said what I wanted to do.
Okay. I just thought we had discussed before, perhaps, of, of being of this responsibility.
That's a different issue. That, that's an issue of.
I was just bringing it up for this particular.
During this hearing, I don't think it's, I think this one particularly, given the amount, probably should all take a ride over there. And, and.
Well, I think.
I guess Frank and Nina Cooper, you're here. I mean, if the board goes over, it would just be to look at the outside of the house.
Actually, David, the problem, the problem that you have when you just go over is all you get to see is from the roadside, right? You don't get to see it from the, you know, so, so the point of, I mean, Meg's comment was, had to do with, we talked about if we wanted to go, you know, going to go into the house and not into the house per se, you don't need to go into the house in this case, but to go onto the property and get around to the backyard. Then we talked about trying to go, you know, two people, you know, for each, so that we so we didn't have five people individually bothering every homeowner or somebody who was applying, and that two people would go and get to look at it and report their findings to the board. I think, Meg, that's as we had.
And that was your thing. I think with this, though, it may very well be that all of us, I mean, I, I leave that to everybody individually. But I, I think, given what I'm sensing is going to be here, the concern and potential issues, it, it probably. That's something we can take up later. But if we needed to get over there, should we contact, because Robin points out to go inside. Ms. Mattel, we would contact, you're the person we should be in contact with so we can get beyond the street and go around the back, et cetera.
Well, Frank and Nina, what, what are your preferences for organizing this? Is this, is this something that you'd like us to coordinate? We, we'd be happy to do that.
We can call us directly. Welcome to come on the, on the property and from one, I think it will be very helpful.
Okay, super. Then we'll do that. We'll get a number for you and we'll give that to the board members and they can contact you. What will happen is just so you understand, sir, it's limited to, we can't have a quorum. Because then it's like a meeting, which has to be noted. So it'll be two people, two people, one person, two people. But it's, it shouldn't be. I mean, I don't see it very invasive. I'm not far from it. It's not a big event. You can throw me out.
No problem. Okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman, on behalf of my clients, the owners of twelve eighty Flagler, of the board members are also welcome to come to their property to get their vantage points.
Of course. Thank you. Thank you very much. And if you would just notify either counsel or Brittany about the phone number so we can just call somebody to do that, that might be very helpful. Coordinate that very nicely. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else someone has at this moment today?
You know, I, I had a couple of questions when I looked at the application, and that is, in terms of the landscaping, it's not clear to me whether the applicant is going to expand on the landscaping, whether they're relying on landscaping from their neighbors. You know, I think that, in my mind at least, needs to be flushed out and, you know, have better understanding in terms of, of the height. And maybe that will help when actually I see the property. But from the drawings, I didn't, I didn't get a sense of that. So if that was flushed out, that would be helpful to me. And then the other question I had was, I understand the FAR is just about the same, but it looked from the drawings and the renderings, it looks like it's a larger building. So I guess my question is, how, how, where do they, how did that happen? You know, how did they reconstruct, reconfigure so that it's still the same FAR even though it does look larger? What was taken away and what was added to?
Yeah, I think, I think the answer there basically is the style of the architecture in the sense that you know, the, 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 the geometry of the, of the proposed structure is, you know, largely, you know, based on rectilinear forms. So, so the roofs have a shallow slope where the existing roofs are a steeper slope. So, so there, there's also an increase, a slight increase in the floor to ceiling height on the second floor. So the, those things, I think in combination with some of the architectural detail, so, you know, we have, we have overhangs, you know, similar to what you would have an overhang in a colonial-style architecture where you have eaves and soffits. The, the overhangs in, in this design are rectilinear. So, so that may be giving, you know, an impression that the, the structure is larger. But as we pointed out, we did, you know, we, we're making an effort to reduce to some extent, the pre-existing non-conformance in the front of the structure. So, you know, that we, we hope the board takes that into account as well.
You know, one thing would be helpful possibly. I don't know what other members think about it, but I'm adjusted to the concept of, you know, using, you know, PDFs and looking at them. But this may be one where having larger plans for the actual plans would be more helpful if there's a set. I don't know how other board members feel about that or Grady, you all come in, I don't know, Robin, so sure.
Actually, plans are all, it's, it's always better to have the plans. And I think with the next application, I think we're going back to the way we used to do, which is you had to submit hard copies. But, which is why I think what, what Brittany has told us. Now that the village is opening, the planning board is opening, you know, the, not the planning board, the village for, the village is open again. But I guess it would be helpful on this one to have the actual hard copies of the plans.
Yeah, for any supplemental information for March, we are opening them back up to the public starting on Monday, so everyone can drop off the full six sets. We, we would prefer them.
Yeah, on this, I think I would. I, I, I would, not everything. I don't, but I, I think in terms of the plans, it would be, I'll look for them here. But I think it would be because it's the size and the dimension make it, you just get a better sense, I think. Ryan, you have a feeling either way on that or you, you're comfortable the way?
Well, I just got a second monitor so I can blow up everything because I wasn't able to function otherwise. But of course, hard plans are always, are always the best.
We can certainly accommodate that. That, that's not a problem.
I'd also, I'd also point out one thing, Rob, they survey you have is dated to what, over two years ago, right? Two and a half years ago? I don't have our rules in front of us or how long.
One year.
One year, yeah. I think you need another survey or otherwise some kind of, can you get that survey? So we just don't.
Update of the survey.
Yeah, let's just avoid the issue. I mean, it's.
Well, we'll take a look and see if we have to get it recertified. We can do that too.
Yeah, okay, yeah. It's, well, that's that. That would just be revised with the current date. That's all. Yeah, my recollection was it's June of the two thousand nineteen. So yeah, it's coming on two and a half years, three years, yeah. That would be helpful. I'm trying to look for the plans themselves. Which ones?
Like page eighty-two of the PDF, David?
Yeah, I'm looking at, I'm actually looking at the breakup one, whereas Scott here copies.
I don't have it. I have the PDF, so.
Oh, I see. Oh, creatures of habits. All right, I don't, I just need at some point, if we could just get the sets of plans for us, okay?
Yeah, that was listed under MP dash one. It's thirty-one pages.
Okay. Great. All right. I think that would be helpful. All right. Did anyone else have anything they want to bring up now for the applicant so we could have it smoother transition? Hopefully, we can go nicely through it all. All right. So we are going to get the phone numbers from us for the, for the neighbor and also we'll get the, was it Frank and Nina Cooper, I believe. Get a number so we can just arrange for them and it's a bad time, a good time. Don't hesitate to tell somebody it's inconvenient then, please. I mean, just don't worry about that. But I mean, as long as it's not an everyday inconvenience. But it's, it's not, it's not meant to be an imposition, but I think it will help. It will help, so I think we can deal with the issues. And if there are people that feel different ways about it, it gives us so much, I think it's, the hands-on gives us a better feeling in a sense.
Totally agree.
All right, great.
And Chair, Chair, since we did notice this as a public hearing and we're going to try to compile the most comprehensive responsive submission we can, can we ask if there are members of the public here to speak so we could take all comments under consideration tonight? Or would you prefer to wait?
Yeah, I was, let's, let's try it this way. Are there people here that want to speak on this matter?
Nobody's raising their hand.
There is or isn't?
Nobody.
Huh. Well, that's your answer.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up. Thank you for.
I, I, Mr. Chair, we submitted a letter. I know not everyone on the, on the board was able to read it. So I really don't think it's useful to summarize that letter since you have, you have not had a chance to read it.
Yeah, you don't have to race to do anything. We're going to be here. We will, this way, I think, candidly, I said that at the beginning. I think this way we'll digest, your letter is, has been submitted and they'll submit something and then we'll all be here in March.
See you then.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much. So we're going to adjourn this matter into the March era.
Thank you very much. Stay safe in the storm, everyone.
Okay, thank you. Stay safe, be well. Okay. That ends the hearings for the evening. I know that there's a, I think it's been usually, we take up to six hearings at a max. I'm going to think about that. I'm inclined to keep it lighter for March because there's something else in March we have to deal with. Oh, we'll have an additional meeting. And then there's, this is going to be, this sounds like it's going to be more than twenty minutes. So I don't know what the board's thinking is. I just, I'm, I happen to be dead set against these eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock meetings that go on all night. I think they, they breed more. I think it's but I'm inclined to, I don't know, how many, do you have any, any indication of how many people might be coming in for the next meeting?
As of right now, possibly two.
Okay. So I have two, and then this one. I gather from the number of pages of the letter, I, Brian, you've read that. I assume there's going to be a lot of issues on this one, correct?
You know, we'll, we'll, we'll have to see, we'll have to see. I mean, they tried to give their legal interpretations to, to back up why the building inspector should be overruled. I think that you've already addressed that. to back up why the building inspector should be overruled. I think that you've already addressed that. It's not going to happen, I don't
It's not going to happen, but we'll see, you know, I mean, we'll read this.
You know, people will have things to say, but I also think that the applicant is going to have uh, the opportunity for a rebuttal. I mean, you know.
No, I'm saying, yeah.
I, I can't, I can't tell you how, how long it's going to go. It's really going to be up to us being able to focus on the facts that we need in order to get enough information to close the hearing. As opposed to just letting things cycle and recycle and recycle and opinions uh, which, which may not be relevant to our deliberations.
Right. Yeah, no, I agree. I just think that my, 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 my guess is or my guesstimate is that this is going to be at least an hour and and if, if, if they come out, if, I mean, we've had a few matters up there that
When you know how many applications you have, we can consider at the time whether or not.
Yeah, all right, well, I'll, I'll tell you what, I'll get a handle on the number of applications and then I'll send an email around. But I just, I mean, Charlie, you know, we've got the other matter coming up too for March, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's going to be one, unless we push that to a separate meeting, which we talked about. All right, why don't we go forward and we will address these things after some. We have some closed hearings today. I guess Waverly is the first one, that's the I don't have the agenda in front of me. Okay, that's the one where the question was if it was a use or an area initially, and then it would go from there to if they're entitled to an area variance, right? That's what they've asked. We asked if they wanted to try both, which they said no. We said, okay, if we find that you need a use variance, then you can come back right away to that one because we got a handle on the whole application. Why don't we discuss first, I guess, the, the, the issue of use versus area? I mean, um that's, this is the, the issue where the code. I don't, I'll just wish of first, if you, if you don't mind, I don't see this as dimensional as an area variance. I, I am, the code, it's, it's, the words, the way the sentence is written in the code is a little bit flipped. But it's a prohibited thing. You, it basically, the code doesn't say it has to be so many feet. The code says it's prohibited to have in this district, in this zoning district, it's prohibited to have storage outside. So to me, that's not dimensional. It's not a matter of saying, ah, you can't have it in that five feet, you can have it in this ten feet. I see it as much more wearing the cloth of a use variance. I, I also think that they might very well be entitled to it. It's a, it's a tough area for, I think, them to develop and use. So I don't know how they've done it, but I think otherwise, I'm, my concern is over the precedent of where, I mean, I guess I'm saying, I would approach it this way. How would the trustees, I mean, had they written this a little bit cleaner, it might have been fine, but they've made it very clear, thou shalt not use this property, the exterior of this property for such and such a purpose. To me, that's not dimensional. That's not, you can only use twenty feet, you can only use thirty feet, you have to have a setback. To me, that's not the traditional concept of an area variance between the area and uses. One is in an area variance, you can use the property for that, but you don't fit within the dimensions of that. Well, here it's the exterior. And what they're also doing is, maybe this is where I started, they feel more strongly about it, is that it's not just that they're using the exterior, they're actually not using the interior. I think at the last meeting, they said, well, mostly everything is done on the exterior there.
You know, David, just to, just to jump in on that.
Go ahead, yeah.
It's, it's a bit of, um, how substantial the variance is. You know, it does say, you know, that you can have storage in the area, but it should be interior. Uh, here, what they're doing is they're taking the entire exterior of the property, the entire exterior of the property for storage.
Right.
Regardless of what that storage is for. Now, I can understand that there may be some restrictions on being able to store vehicles because under, under the DMV, uh, these mobile generators on trailers actually do fit the definition of a vehicle. Which really isn't very different than the fact that, uh, you know, it used to be used for parking. You know, but that said, uh, you know, I can understand if they're making a case in terms of of storage, well, you know, it's, it's tough to park these vehicles inside in such a way where it's really going to, to work. And then they can make more of a, of an argument that it really doesn't change um, the character of the property since it used to be used for parking. But then they go in and they, they want to store all of this other equipment, which are boxes. They're boxes with various types of HVAC equipment and such. And I think that fundamentally changes the, the nature, the use of the property because they're, because then how do we uphold not, you know, the, the other people who want to store other things outside? It like it completely annuls, uh, the way the code is written, if we're just going to have them put whatever they want on the property.
But see, that, I agree with you completely on the latter point particularly. I think that it's not, but I just want to say we're not a legislative body, we're not the trustees. So we could say, I think it's a great idea. And I don't know that I'm opposed to the idea. I, I candidly, I don't think I am, except for one thing. Whoever wrote the code said, thou shalt not use the exterior space for storage. To me, my question is, does that take my hands and tie them and say, listen, I think it's a great idea? Go and make an application, petition the trustees for a change of zone. I've done that to the trustees here years ago, I did that for the library. Well, they were, they were not a legal use there. I said, well, let's make it a legal use, let's not go non-conforming. You know, you have a right to petition for a change of zone. I think that would have been a much more efficient use of time and energy than this. But I think, my question is, like you said, the trustees have said that. I'm not sure, if I buy what they've said and I say that's a restriction, then I say, well, thank you, you know, I could it's one of those decisions you could write and say, I think it's a great idea, it would be wonderful, it'd be helpful, be great, but we can't do it. I, I think, I think that's why I think it's, it's a use variance. I'm looking for the
I have a
section on that one.
David?
Yeah.
There is a case that I don't recall a, a, any of the memos. I'm sorry, Robin, did, did you, you were not here for, were you here for all the meetings? Is this okay? I'm interested to hear the case that you have, but are you participating in these deliberations? Have you watched the videos? Yes, Meg.
Yes. She is, everybody is.
Um, okay, so, you know, originally I was thinking of this as possibly an area variance. And then it occurred to, because it, you know, the question is what is the use and the use is stored? And then I thought, well, maybe the real use is outdoor storage versus indoor storage, in which case it's more and is, and to me, the question is, is the use fundamentally different? Is outdoor something that, and I'll get to my case in a second. Outdoor is some, is it just like, you know, you know, because dimensional is not as clear as that, you know, there are things where it isn't so clearly a dimensional that has, the courts have said is an area variance. So I don't think you can look at it simply on a question of number of feet. But I think it's more of the question of, is, like parking is not number of feet, but it's a question of is twenty cars really different from ten cars? And it really isn't. So the question that I have here is, is outdoor storage really fundamentally different than indoor storage? And to me, I think it actually, when I look at it that way, I think it actually is. But now I will recite the case. So it's Barsic, B A R S I C, and I only found it today, I can, you know, circulate it after today to the board members. Barsic v. Young, it's a second department case from two thousand and five. And the property owner filed an twenty-two eighty-third four eighty-eight.
This was a case that Mr. Noto had actually cited in his brief.
So I think Yeah, I didn't see, I didn't, maybe I didn't read it from that, I just I sort of
Barsic versus Young, yeah.
Okay, I went to it from the opposite perspective. So what it says is, the property owner filed an application with the ZBA for permission to store equipment on vacant land that was used in connection with an existing business. Uh, the ZBA treated the application as one for a use variance and denied the request. The trial court instructed the ZBA to assess the application under standards applicable to an area variance. And then the appellate division says whether the use variance standards were appropriately applied. So the court, basically the court, the second department overturned the determination of a lower court that it was an area variance and found that it was a use variance. So that is kind of about as close to this case as I could find. Yeah, that's why I think it's a question of the fundamental issue of what is the fundamentally that we're talking about? Is outdoor storage fundamentally a different use than at, you know, outdoor storage isn't permitted, indoor storage is, is it just a question of dimension? Like you, the roof only has to be twenty feet above it, or they only have ten car spaces. Could they have twenty car spaces? If that's what it was, then I think even though car spaces is clearly not, that the difference between ten and twenty is not fundamentally a different use. I think outdoor, indoor storage is a fundamentally different use.
Oh, yeah, but you have the
Oh, I don't have it now, David, hold on.
Yeah, the section, if you have the section, I'll pull it up.
Yeah, I could
Are you looking for the code section that it talks about the use?
Yeah, yeah.
It's three forty-two thirty-two A one B two.
And hold on, let me find it.
Or A two, excuse me.
If, do you mind if I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I, along with Brian, was trying to think of whether or not this is sort of similar to parking cars. So and I actually found in the code that we have a defined term for trailer. So I know on the DMV that might be something about a trailer, but I, I felt um, that I had to go with how the code defines trailer and this did not fit the code term. So then that took away that possibility of thinking that it's very similar to, a similar use to parking cars. Um, and I agree with what everybody has actually said so far, that I think it's a fundamentally different use whether you're indoors or outdoors. And I know in the code, when it's in more than one district where it says all of these permitted uses must be indoors. Um, so we're talking about not just storage, I think we're thinking about something that's passive here. It, that would mean that a lot of things where you're fixing cars or you're having a club or lots of other permitted uses would require an air advance variance to be done outside. And that just didn't start to make sense to me because I think something one thing about think of storage, we're thinking that it's quiet and passive. There are other uses that you would consider that would definitely change the nature of the, of the community of the neighborhood. Um, we could then say, well, it have too large an impact, it's, it's area, but the balancing test. But I think it speaks to the point that these uses are fundamentally different once they're outside rather than when they're inside. I also, um, in that Barsic case, I actually think that that one was about where a outside storage was permitted when it was an accessory to a building. And it was, they were trying to argue since the building wasn't there or wasn't, it was in the front yard instead of the backyard. But I agree that they found that, so that's how I, I just didn't think that that case was pertinent. But when I looked at the other, another case that the applicant had brought, Wilcox v. ZBA of Yonkers. Um, it talked about whether or not an area variance, how an area variance involves no change in the essential character of the zone district. And therefore, the neighborhood considerations are not as strong as in a use variance. And I actually thought that that works against the applicant because I do think that um, having storage outside would definitely change the essential character of the neighborhood. On top of that, right now, uses that are inside a building are confined, there's boundaries about the limitation of how much space they could take up in the lot. Once we go outside, there is no legislation to say what the yards need to be, what the height needs to be. There's, there's no kind of guidelines. And so for us to start to consider, okay, it's, it's the same use that's permitted, just isn't under a building. But would we have to start writing the legislation to decide what is fair? Can it get close to a neighbor? How high could it go up? Are there any things that could be stored and not stored, or the things that should not be seen by the public? Um, so I'm listing a lot of reasons why I find that this is definitely should be a request for a use variance and it doesn't fall under a request for an area variance.
Yeah, Charlie, if I could trouble you again, it was three forty-two thirty-two?
Uh, three, excuse me, three forty-two thirty-two A two.
So A two. Okay, so it starts off with, it says, the following are the only principal uses permitted. That's what A one says, and then it enumerates them. And then A two says, all of the above uses, including incidental and accessory uses, shall be carried on in enclosed building, except for the off-street parking. And that's the right section, right, Charlie?
Yep.
Yeah, so my point is this, and, and I think, I agree with you, Meg, and, and it, it, the code is, I mean, I don't know if I was right, if someone wrote that and they said, does this mean we, that it's not a permitted use to do this outside? I think the answer is yes. And Meg, I think the reason, and I agree with you completely, but the reason that there are no provisions for the outside are because it's not permitted. And once it's not permitted, and you're right about the other issue. I mean, I think, yeah, I, I didn't read Barsic lately, but I, I'll go back and look at that. I just think I, I, I don't know how we get off saying, oh, well, it says that, but we can vary that. And well, okay, we can issue a variance, but I don't see that's a dimensional use when they say you cannot do this out here. That doesn't become a dimensional change. And, and I think Meg's point is well taken. I find it very well because there aren't, what are the, what's the setback? What's the site? Well, there aren't any because you're not supposed to do it outside. I don't know.
Well, I agree with
I was surprised that there, that they didn't make this a use application because they probably have had a rough time trying to, you know, use the property. What do they have to show? The difference in the use, Charlie, is what? They have to show no other viable opportunity economically, right?
The hardship, they have to show that there's a hardship for, in order, that there'd be an economic hardship from operating the property in conformance with all permitted uses. So that rent they would get would be too low, assuming they paid market rent or the lease that they, the lease value that they could get would be too low. It could not meet the, you know, the amortized value of the cost of the property, assuming it was sold for a permitted use. And the, you know, the, the carrying costs, et cetera, et cetera. They have to show that there's a unique, you know, practical divestment, unique condition, something particular to the site. So there's a lot of things, it's, it's harder.
It's a much, it's a much more difficult standard.
In this instance, in this instance, it, the property there, I'm not sure. I mean, how much luck they've had with trying to find someone to rent it and to use it and economically. I mean, it is more difficult, but I'm, I wouldn't say it's impossible.
The problem with, well, not the problem, but the issue with the use variance standards are it's not a balancing test.
Right.
You have to demonstrate compliance of all four and one of the other criteria is self-created hardship.
Well, self-created hardship doesn't preclude it if they make, I mean, it was not the same thing, but obviously that's one of the findings. Because every, arguably, every variance is self-created and since you're applying for it to do so, you bought the property. That's not going to stand in their way. If it's a pre-existing lot and they bought it, that doesn't preclude them from getting a use variance.
Yeah, I follow you, I'm with you.
No, I don't know that that would stand in the way since they doesn't look like they've done anything to create the condition.
Yeah, they bought the property and they're not able to find it, that, that's not enough. It's self-created, but, but they didn't create the hardship, they're not able to They're not able to minimize it. They're not able to get past it.
Right.
Yeah, I I'm, so I'm, I guess the real first issue here is, I mean, does the board feel that this is an area variance? And if it's not, then I think, see, my problem is I keep going back to the actual code section uh, that I had lost my number on, but because it says the only uses and then all of these uses have to be outside. I go, okay, well. I I mean, I almost feel like saying, well, gee, where did we get appointed and anointed to say, well, it doesn't mean that. It means what we say it means. We're the new trustees. That's why I was surprised they didn't just go right to the trustees and say modify, change the zone here. Change the, you know, the zoning on this property.
Dave, I don't think it's that simple. Just says storage. I mean, is that sort of like it was a little, you know?
It said you can't have storage outside, right?
Well, that section doesn't actually say you can't have storage outside. That's not the, that just says the permitted uses are storage. It doesn't say anything in that section.
No, but it, well, okay, but if it's good answer, the other one.
Go to two.
Yeah, go to.
Go to two, it said all of those.
Yeah, I I agree that it would have been nicer to write it a different way. But if I was commenting on the writing on that, Brian, I'd say, well, you know, you might want to do it this way, but it's clear. It just says all of these uses, including incidental, including, doesn't say accessory, incidental uses shall, no, that's, I'm sorry, incidentally, yeah, shall be carried on in enclosed buildings, except for parking.
Right.
I mean, it's pretty clear what they mean.
Yeah.
Day one, I kept thinking to myself, why are you?
And what the, and what the applicant is asking for is, you know, a hundred percent uh, a business uh, based on storage and that they want all of their storage outside.
Yeah, see, that's where the flipper is, Brian. I'm completely with you because it's almost the opposite. It's almost saying, and all of the storage will be outside and you don't need the inside, which is the exact opposite because they said.
Of what, of what the code says.
Right, yeah. And I just not, I'm, my only issue personally is I don't see how we get the authority to say, oh, well, nah, we could, we we have a magic way because it's dimensional. I mean, dimensional is to me, just what it says, you know? I mean, I know when we had that one on the, the restaurant and they wanted to use the opening for pickup and this, I thought that was dimensional. That's how you use a piece of, this isn't dimensional. This says it's forbidden. And you're not just using it as an accessory. And it even says it can't be incidental or accessory. So I don't know. That's my, I miss my view. I don't want to speak for anyone else, but.
I I think we're all in agreement as I listen.
Yeah. So we find that they have to do so. If the feeling is that we have to do, they 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 really are, given the nature of the code, the language of the code, as well as, and as Ryan, Robin pointed out, and then Meg, as you pointed out, as well as the the incidental issues which flow from that, like where are the setbacks? Where are the things? There's nothing, there's no structure for it. It's actually, you you're actually creating something without a, an infrastructure around it. You're saying, okay, you can do it and you can do anything there because there are no restrictions. There's no requirements there. So you can do anything there, I suppose. I don't even think there's a setback requirement. Well, if that's where we want to go and then we give them the right to come back in, right, for, yeah. Without prejudice, them coming back in immediately, as far as I'm concerned, okay. But they just have to show economically that they can't do anything with it. I mean, if the board wants to go that way, that's fine. And I'm comfortable that.
Would, do we close this, do we vote and close this application without prejudice? They can, they can.
The resolution would be that one of the conditions is that there's no prejudice to them coming back in for that. And I think, by the way, didn't I, I think I said that to them. I said, you don't want to proceed on a use, so we'll consider the area and then you put your case in, then we'll decide it. Then if we decide that it's an air, not an area variance, then you can come back in for it.
I think you didn't say that.
Yeah, I'm pretty, I'm really, yeah. And I actually said it with something else in mind. I actually said it to try to save, maybe they would say, yeah, you know what? We'll ask for the use now. But no.
Do you have enough information to draft a resolution from what we were all commenting on?
Oh, you have.
I do, um, I do. And I was going to look into this, uh, earlier this week, but my entire household has COVID, so I'm a bit delayed.
If you can stay over at our places.
Man, it's, uh, my daughter was the last one to go. She tested positive yesterday, so it's been a whirlwind. Um, but one of the questions I had, uh, two things is, um, and and I'll take all of your input and I'll also look into the legality of it and also what you think. Um, would the resin, resolution be, um, a denial of the area variance? I I wouldn't think so. I think it would be that this board doesn't have jurisdiction to review the area variance application for the reasons stated tonight. And I think they were all good reasons. Um, and because there's a jurisdictional issue here, I believe we don't have to complete secret. So this was an unlisted action under secret. Typically, you would have to do a part two VAF and then a part three negative declaration. Um, but I think because there's no jurisdiction here, you don't have to complete secret.
It doesn't sound like it's jurisdictional because we have jurisdiction to consider an area variance. The issue isn't whether it's jurisdictional. I think the issue is whether this was appropriately filed as an area variance. So I think the determination has to be, whereas the board has determined that that an improper application was filed or something like that and can't vote on this because it wasn't filed in the proper form. I don't think it's jurisdictional.
I think what you can do is, I I'm closer to Robin on this, on this, because I think what you, what you really are saying here is the board has looked at this, they've made an application for an area variance and the board indicated that one of the issues wasn't. The board now upon deliberation determines that it's a use variance is required and therefore, since the area variances is is not appropriate and is not being considered further, because it's it's the wrong application.
I just wanted to make sure this, I just wanted to make sure you guys didn't want to go down a road of actually denying the area variance, which I don't.
I don't know. I think we're saying we we can deny it on the ground. If you want to say the area application is deemed denied because it's an inappropriate application.
Yeah, I'll come up with some word.
Robin, you agree? The area is being denied, not on the merits. It's being denied because it's, yeah, yeah. I agree. It shouldn't be on the merits. Brian, you with that or not?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, that's.
Not on the merits. We're not, we're not saying you can't, you wouldn't meet the standards. Maybe they would. I think they would actually, but you, we can't give it. It's like, we can't change the code either, you know? I think it's the language of the code and then I think everyone else has embellished it with. It's not just being technical. We're even saying, I think what what Robin's saying, what Meg is saying, even if you go, and and Brian, but you meant, if you go beyond the code. Now, we're not being hyper technical and saying, okay, that's it. Boom. Moreover, an examination of this leads to the conclusion that for good reason, it's it's a substantive matter of not of an area.
I I think we've just, I think we've just decided that it's, it's not an area of.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Do you want to vote on that now and then you put a resolution in or do you want to?
No, let's wait till we have a resolution in front of the board.
Okay. And we'll give them the right to come right back in. If they want to, that's up to them. And so without prejudice, them going to the trustees also, I don't care what they do. There seems to be a reluctance to do that usually to get a, try to get a changes zone. Maybe they haven't been successful. I don't know. Some municipalities, people go in regularly. Instead of going to a zoning board, they just go in and they file a petition for you. I believe you can actually petition as a private citizen for changes on. Oh, ton of ice slips. Someone just did that. Okay, so I'm involved with an, okay. Bingo. Um, all right, so let's go to the next. We 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 comfortable there? We going to the next one, which is.
Do we, do we vote on anything there or no?
I think the, I I was, I'm open to a vote on it, but apparently the the general, is the consent.
We're gonna wait till we have the resolution in front of.
Oh, okay. So so Charlie will do a resolution.
Yeah, if not for anything else, it's kind of an administrative headache.
Let's, let's see it in writing.
Yeah, I circulated around on that one. I'm sorry, I'm looking at all of this. I have misplaced something. Second, all right, so that's, the next is the, um.
Toyota.
Toyota, okay. So that's. I I think that raises an issue that I'm not sure we've ever really addressed. And I've never, I've never seen anyone come up with it. I've never ever conceptually understood or conceived of, you would have one operation with different permits, operating different parts of it. I think the whole idea of a special permit is a cohesiveness of the whole thing. If you read the special permit considerations, they take into account the operations. So if you're going to add another area to it, then you amend it.
Well, listen, you know, I I've also given this some thought. Because you you already have a situation where you have one ownership with two special permits. So now we're considering a third property. And I think the fundamental question is, is it going to operate independently? Or can it operate independently? Which are two very different things. I think when you have one ownership, is a practical matter, it's not going to operate independently because you've got one person as the employer of all the employees, of all the supplies, of the paperwork and of the stock and such. But the real question I would think, and and I'd like other people's opinions for the special permit, does that matter? Or or does it matter that the site can operate independently? Uh, because you already have one ownership with two different sites. If the site is able to operate independently, they have a building, they have the required parking spaces, uh, they have product and and they could, they could completely operate independently. Um, you know, can they get the special permit for that site? Because the 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 ownership here is said time and time again, they may not retain ownership of each and every site. If we go and we say, well, the special permit goes with the owner and 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 we're only going to give one special permit for all three places, then if they sell one place, we'd have to go revisit the other ones to give new special permits. Uh, plus the person who's buying the the third lot. So I think that, you know, their their ideas have to have three separate, uh, special permits because this place can operate independently. And if they sell it, it doesn't, it doesn't affect their other operations. So I mean, those are just my thoughts when you get to the bottom of this.
I thought that they kind of acknowledged, I mean, there was a bit of a dance on it, but they've acknowledged that this is all one cohesive operation. They don't even have toilets or something on the one side.
No, they they do. We asked them about that.
They do, oh, they, if you drive by it, I mean, it's one operation. See, every time you go in, if somebody comes in to do this, you're supposed to for the special permit application with three fifty-five, look at the totality and make sure there's all this compliance and make it work well together. I mean, I don't understand this. I don't, they don't want to amend. See, I think my attitude is this, this should be an amendment to the special permit. To supplement it with this.
They already have, they already have two special permits.
All right.
So it's it's something that the board already did was to give a separate special permit for the lot across the way, which seems to be set up similarly to this. Um, it does seem odd to me. It, what I'm concerned about is that we're not, they're not falsely getting a special permit for something that could be a standalone operation, but it's actually being used as for storage for the operation across the street. So, um, it's actually not a place to sell cars. It's actually a storage facility, which would be an unpermitted use in this district. So I think that's all the questions that we had. We all asked quite a lot of questions to try to determine the case. And they quite readily will say they'll meet whatever we say they have to do. Oh, you want a bathroom? We'll put the bathroom. You want to see the inside and we have a desk, we're going to do sales, we're going to show you that. Um, you know, if you need more customer parking, we'll put the customer parking spaces. So, um, and yet it seemed the first time that we heard the business model, it seemed that it was largely going to be, we show a lot of here and then go across the street to complete the sale, which sounds like it's basically, that's the storage one. But I don't see how we could enforce it in the district, in this district, a permitted use. It is a permitted use to sell motor vehicles. Um, but they do require a special permit. And as long as they meet the conditions of the special permit, we would be, I think, amiss to not give them the special permit. As long as they're saying that they are going to implement all of the things that we would say are required for the special permit, I don't see how we can say, I don't think you're really going to do that. Um, I don't see how we govern it either. Um, I think we're a little bit stuck in, as I keep coming around. I would just, I don't know where the board is going to come out and everybody hasn't spoken. If we should consider giving them a special permit, an independent special permit for the space, I would hope that we would write the resolution, um, with enough detail of all the conditions that need to be met to make sure that they they need to come back. And if it's a, you know, if it's for a few years or a certain amount of time, they would need to come back and show that they've complied with all of those conditions that we wrote. Sell the business or that lot falls into someone else's hands. We have been very, very specific about all the dishes that need to be met under the special permit that they are then adopting or, you know, getting transferred to them.
I had, I mean, I agree really with Meg and Brian because it seems to me the issue is, let me look at it differently. Let me say it differently. If I owned a site and had an operation on it and my, I didn't have enough room on my site to expand, right? Because I'm limited by the land I own. And another site opened up across the street. And I wanted to expand over there, but I was going to conduct the same operation over there just as opposed to being able to sell twenty-something on one side. I'm selling twenty-one thing or something on one side and selling twenty-something on the other side. And I don't see any reason why you can't get a special permit if I'm having an operation. The fact that I own both and maybe running the same business at both sites doesn't mean I can't as long as I'm actually running the same business. So I think that, um, as long as he is actually running the same business or a different business where, you know, he's running the business, whatever that business is with all the requirements of a business, then I think the two, a separate special permit is appropriate. Um, and we should give them a special permit with, as Meg said, all the conditions that are necessary to actually have a separate business or the same, not a, a separate, even if the same business, but a separate, completely set, but a separate operation. So that if, in fact, tomorrow, the one across the street closed, for whatever reason, which whether the first or the second closed, they would still be able to continue operating the one that didn't close. And if they sold one of them, the other one would still continue. But everything has to happen in each place. Everything that's necessary for the first site has to happen at the first site. And everything that's necessary for the operation at the second site, or in this case, the third site, has to happen at the third site. In that case, I think a, um, a separate special permit is appropriate.
Well, Robin, don't you have to, if you do the separate one, I hear what you're saying. Don't you have to amend the existing one to the extent it's using this one?
No, because you're essentially saying, I have, let's think about it rather than this kind of a business. Let's think about a store. Suppose I have a store on one side of the street and I want to expand my store. I have a store and my store is, and I can't expand it. I'm, I'm, I'm landlocked, if you will. So I buy a site across the street and I open a separate business. Let me think of a supermarket, a small market. And I want to finish, expand my market across the street. Now, maybe I don't even carry the exact same goods. Maybe I only have fruits and vegetables on one side of the street and I have. Maybe I only have fruits and vegetables on one side of the street and I have hard goods on the other side. But the fruit and vegetable store is arguably a fruit and vegetable store. My, there's no requirement that says I have fruit and vegetables in both stores. So I can have fruit and vegetables in one store and canned goods, you know, hard goods in the other store and they're both my Robbins', you know, markets, but they, and they're operating together because obviously I'm operating them together, but they're completely independent. If I closed Robbins Market, I could just keep, I might not wanna keep one is only fruit and vegetables and one is only hard goods, but I could absolutely do that.
Yeah, go ahead.
That I think the difference is that what we were thinking about is that Robbins Market is running in one lot and there's a space across the street. And across the street, you're just storing all of your canned goods to bring over to sell in the one that's over there. That's what we're trying, that's, I'm not saying that that's what's happening here, but I believe that's what I was trying to ascertain. Are they really operating a complete store and business or are they operating the storage for the market that's across the street? Because that would be an unpermitted use.
But Meg, I don't have to go that far. See, I think the problem, Robin, the, the issue I have with your analysis and I like it is that, but the problem I have is these aren't separate. I, I mean, we've listened to them. There, you go over there, you, this is where they handle it, this is where the paperwork is, this is here. It's one operation. So it's not like you're selling X over here and Y over there. This is a merger. It's, you, you go there right now and you see it. I mean, I drove by it today. There's cars on both sides, the same company, the same flags. I mean, it's like, it's one. It's not like, I, I, the way you explain it, Robin, makes perfect sense to me. If I had a completely separate standalone entity, fine, I can have a relationship with myself.
But it's not a relationship, it's the same store. I, Robin, own Robbins Market and they're both called Robbins Market. And they all wear the same colored uniforms and they all have the same everything else. The only difference is I happen to only sell one thing over here and one thing over there because I discovered. Better for me, but, so I don't see.
No, no, but what, Robin, what if you had one store? You have what you just said, and now you create another one, but it sells the same stuff. And actually, you can go like on the first floor of Bloomingdale's to pick out something. You can go up to the second floor where I'll meet my wife. And then I can pay for my things up there, she can pay for hers downstairs. It's one store. Now, I suppose one could say, it's not like the jewelry district where everybody's got a little booth, but it's one store. So I mean, if someone told me that the first floor of Bloomingdale's was a different store and a second, but they work together, it's not, it's, to me.
That's a bad example because.
Go along with that.
No, I'll tell you why Bloomingdale's is a bad example, because the Bloomingdale's that opened in Soho actually was able to open because they made that argument. That each of the departments in Bloomingdale's was a separate store and it wasn't one store. So let's leave Bloomingdale's out of it.
I don't know, I just, to me, it's like, to me, it's like, I feel, and, and I, I don't have a big issue, but my problem with this is, you got a Toyota dealership here. Okay, they have a special permit, but they have several. What, for what? For the same thing? But they're one. So when you do your analysis under three fifty-five or you take a look at, on, was it article ten or something of the code?
Can we write in the resolution that, that we are giving a special permit to this motor vehicle dealership? Toyota City, or you put the name in, that is operating in conjunction with this other one, that, that we are knowledgeable of it and that's why we're giving this resolution. But, and we're giving it to it as it was explained to us, which means it's associated with the one across the street.
Or do it, or, or do an amendment of the special permit, submerge them and then say, if, if they decide, they've mentioned that they may wanna split it up. Then they could come back in, let me say, then they could come in. So without prejudice and them saying, okay, we're changing our operation. That's okay.
Charlie, do you think it's going too far to say that we're describing the business model that they told us and saying we are giving the special permit to this, for this business model, which was explained to us that they will be sharing inventory and some sales will be completed in, you know, in, in the various locations as part of the, we're knowledgeable of that and that's what we've given the special permit to, that we understand that that's the business model?
I don't see how we can.
I'm sorry, I asked Charlie. I, I'm sorry, I just asked Charlie.
Um, I would be comfortable with that approach so long as if you're doing an individual special permit for this facility, this facility has the ability to function on its own. Um, because then you get into a situation later where, let's say they sell the property, the, the subject property to another car dealership that wouldn't be working in conjunction with the one across the street. You would want the resolution, yes, to recognize that, uh, they're working in conjunction, but it also has the ability to operate as a standalone facility.
No, no, I was saying, no, because I, I feel that they're, they're actually having an adjunct position and it's basically more storage. I'm not really sure that it's actually, I consider this, but I can't, I can't see how we deny them if they keep saying we'll do, we'll meet whatever conditions. So I'm actually saying, I understand that this special permit, as we're giving it with those conditions, run with whoever's gonna walk in. But that means that if somebody walks in to do a car dealership and they don't mean to run it in conjunction with the one across the street, they would have to come back to us to ask, to start the special permit process again.
They would have to anyway.
I'm not making it possible to transfer unless it's for exactly the same business model, which is.
No, the special permit runs with the owner. When the ownership changes.
No, so I misspoke at, at the last meeting about that. So the general principle of zoning is that it runs with the land and it's not tied to the specific operator.
Special permit does, isn't, isn't like that though, is it Charlie?
No, because special permits are a, you know, it's a, it's a zoning function. And so, you know, there's a lot of cases out there that say when you start to regulate the oh, operator or the tenant as opposed to the actual use of the land, which zoning is intended for, that that would be inappropriate.
The board, the board used to take the position that a special permit was just for the owner. But the law was never consistent with what the board used to do because New York law, there are, there are a fair number of cases that talk about this, Dave, in New York. And, um, and if you think about it this way, so the difference is that, so, so the way Meg described it, if that's what it said, would be the same thing. If we gave them a special permit and the special permit were somehow in conjunction with, then someone else who wanted it would have to operate it in conjunction with it would, because that was a condition of the special permit. It couldn't be, but I'm not sure that's a problem because that may be going to, I think that's actually something we can't do because that's controlling the way they operate and I don't think that affects the land use issues involved. So I would actually have a real problem with doing that. Um, it seems to me that we, and, and I don't think, as David is suggesting, Dave's suggesting, suggesting that we amend the existing special permit. They didn't apply to amend the existing special permit. So I think we'd either have to grant it with all the conditions we think are appropriate or deny it because we think it's not independent and make them come back to amend.
We could decide that it was an amendment. We could decide that since we don't give it, this, this is a part and a subset of the other one.
Right, but if, if the special permit, if the special permit goes with the land, I think that further strengthens the argument that if this site and they are saying that they will, and as Meg said, you can put in all of the, uh, restrictions and qualifiers of it and they'd have to come back every couple of years to, to make sure that they proved it. But if this site can operate independently and the special permit runs with the land, then I, I would say that you can grant the special permit, uh, but monitor it, uh, to determine whether or not it's actually functioning uh, as an independent, uh, site or whether or not.
How can you possibly determine whether they are storing vehicles that they are reserving for sale in that space or storing vehicles that they bought from, um, in trade-ins? It's, you know, we're putting in conditions that we can't possibly even enforce. And that's what's the difficulty and they've gone back and forth.
They've been all over on us, yeah.
Yeah, they've been all over on it.
They've been all over. They started off with, we're only doing used cars. Then they went to the other, then they went to what really won. My question to everyone is this. Based on what you've heard, do you think this could be an independent operation tomorrow?
Think it, I don't think it will be. I think it could be. Uh, but I don't think it will be and that's, that's how I started. There's a difference between uh, its ability to operate independently and whether or not it will be. I don't think it can be if it's under, uh, the exact same ownership as across the street.
And I also looked at the code, uh, a lot of detail about what is entailed in a motor vehicle dealership or it's, it just says you're selling motor vehicles. And I kept pressing them, does that mean the sale is completed or do you need this other space over here to finish the transaction? Then I started thinking, I don't know, when is a sale a sale? Like you all shake hands and you agree and then you go over and you have the finance person do the paperwork. Was it not sold on this side? I, I feel like, and, and also to your point, Brian, could it be a standalone? I think if we put all these conditions in, that it has to have an office, an enclosed office, can't just be a parking lot. And, and, and you would think it would need customer parking, it would need to have a bathroom because you, you know, if you're running a full-fledged business with customers, you would have a bathroom there. Um, sort of things like that. And then if they put a finance person in there or somebody who could finalize a sale, somebody could do that, but maybe they're not gonna operate that way, way right now. So I just, I, I think that we have the sense that they might be trying to use it more for storage than anything else. And I absolutely agree with you, Greta, that how do you govern that? But I also think that we have to follow the code, which says that as of, it's a permitted use. We can write conditions in and agree to, uh, to the conditions. We, I don't think we should deny it. I also think that we would read it that you're supposed to only sell used cars that were turned in for the ones that were new. And we've.
Where they start.
It's all ready, but we can't govern that one either, right? We can't, we don't know where the used cars go or which used cars Toyota's bringing in, you know, from a Toyota in another town or something. Um, there's, there's a lot of about it that we can't govern. And from an impact on, on what it does to the community or, or why car dealerships are permitted or would not be permitted, does it make that much difference to us whether the, I think I would guess you didn't wanna just have a majority used cars. That's why it had to be some sort of transference. It was supposed to be equivalent. So it was really a new car dealership that had some used cars. But does it really matter to us whether it comes from that lot or this lot? As long as it's basically the majority of it is a new car dealership.
Yeah, but then someone comes in and they buy this and they say, okay, now we need to have a major operation just like the other side does. And why can't they do it?
They were totally separate and they came to us, had nothing to do with Toyota. And they said, here, this is a nice lot. I'm gonna have a nice small dealership, I'm just doing like specialty Ferraris, don't need a huge lot. And I'm gonna set up here. We were, they had an office and they had a bathroom and they, we felt we were comfortable with the amount of uh, customer parking that they had, the lighting. We probably would give them the special permit. They would, they would, you know, we're just, I'm, in the back of my mind, I'm thinking that they're trying to circumvent mostly storage, but.
Or they're gonna have a big.
Someone else, an independent person coming in to have a car dealership there. If they met all the conditions that we're going to write in our, in the resolution, um, I don't think we would deny it.
I, my problem is a different one. My problem is I just have a lot of problems taking an operation that's unified and treating them with different permits. Cause I don't know how you apply those standards to each one. Yeah, I would just make the decision as you agree and then just say, the, and then just put in. That's, it's the same order, that this constitutes a special permit, which amends the existing special permit, which, of which it is a part. I don't know, that's.
Which one though? Because they have two.
Merge them, I don't, I don't know.
Do we have the ability to do that?
Then they challenge, then they say, we, someone said, well, what, what are they gonna argue? They're gonna argue that they should have had a right to do a standalone that's integrated because there's no question. They started off with, we're gonna do the used ones, then they went to this, i- i- it's one operation. I'm sorry. Whether, I, I mean, I've, I've heard it, we've heard it all. I- if that's what it is, it is an operation. And then they've actually been upfront and they said, well, we may wanna spin it off. Well, then you come in and you amend. I'm, Charlie, I have a question for you. I'm just doing some quick research here. I'm finding something here. Things were not covenants with the land on some. What case, have you found cases on this being a covenant that runs with, that special permits run with the land and?
Yeah, I sent them all, cause you emailed me this.
Yeah.
Um, let me just pull up my email. I sent you two. But there are, there are, uh, several out there. So one is um, Dexter versus the town board of the town of Gate.
And what's this, what's the site number on that?
That's thirty-six NY two D one O two. And the other is the city of New York versus Delafield two forty-six corporation.
Yeah, I found, and Philadelphia, I have that one. And the city of New York, thirty twenty, okay, so Dexter is, oh, that's Court of Appeal.
And if you go to the email I sent you, um, this afternoon, I highlighted the relevant section of that case.
Okay. This is not my full-time position. All right, I, I, I don't know. No one, I mean, I don't wanna stand, no one else has a problem with the idea of having this, this merged operation with different permits?
No, I mean, I, 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 I agree with you, Dave. I think, um, they've gone back and forth and then I think at some point they made a strategic decision that it was in their benefit to have three separate um, special permits. And it's like they want their cake and eat it too. And, um, yeah, I, I think this is, um, they're saying one thing, but I believe they're gonna operate the, um, as an integrated business and there's no way for us to know how they do it.
But if they said that they, they say that you're gonna do anything we tell them to do, we're gonna do it. I mean, I, I agree with you, but how can we, how, what, on what grounds do we deny?
We're not denying it.
No, 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 no. Okay.
No, I'm not talking about denying it either. I'm just saying, fine, it's deemed to be, you can have it, it's deemed to be a part of the overall operation. Why? Because it is. It is a part.
And if it's not. A separate special permit or you're, you're saying it has to.
I would just deem this to be constitute a part of the special permit. That covers.
Special permit for across the street?
Yeah, I mean, just, I would just treat this as an amendment or a modif, or a supplement to the existing ones. And then if you wanna break them up, then you've gotta comply. Each one has to just come in, you make one application and comply.
But Dave, does that actually, does that actually help us? Because I think what we don't want to see is we don't want to see this lot used only for storage. Uh, we, we don't, we do want the customer parking, we do want the building and the showroom and the, and we do want it to, uh, work independently. If we, if we start to put these special permits together, uh, will they then not have to meet all of the requirements for a special permit on that plot of land? And I, I would like to avoid that. I would like them, I know, Greta, that we don't have the ability to police it. And I know that it's one ownership. But if the special permit literally puts out the requirements in terms of having the building, having the customer parking, limiting the amount of cars that they can have there, the hours of operation, the lighting, everything that we wanna see on that property, I'd rather have a special permit, apply those restrictions to the property. And if, of course, if they, they somehow violate it, then we, you know, we have the right to, to pull it and, 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 you know, I guess do some kind of enforcement. Although that's not the kind of thing, you know, that we're looking to do. But I still, if we, if we just put it as just one special permit, then I don't know that we have the requirements that we need on this piece of property. We haven't. Then I don't know that we have the requirements that we need on this piece of property, we haven't even told the neighbors. Uh, uh, we, I don't even think we've appropriately noticed the neighbors. In terms of if we go back and say, okay, this is just gonna be part of the main operation, they're gonna feel like, well.
Not the neighbors, it's them, it's them, it's not the neighbors.
No, no, but what you did was, you, you put out a notice to the public, does anybody have a problem? If we uh do a special permit for this location? And if you're now putting a special permit, you're just amending across the street special permit. They may not uh need to conduct business on here, are they gonna have to build the building? Are they gonna just use it as storage, which is something that people already have ejected, you know, objected to? Um, you know, would we have to renotice? Uh, the, the neighborhood to let them know that, hey, you know what, we're not gonna make this a full fledged site. We're just gonna uh amend the operator's special permit, so. We're not gonna have the restrictions on this piece of property that, that we've been deliberating about for the past several meetings. I think that all the. I think that they should, this piece of land should, should meet all of the restrictions necessary. Uh, for a special, an individual special permit.
What happens if later on they come by and they say, okay, we got, we bought out, we have a special permit, we now need to expand. To cover the things that we used to be done across the street before we had a falling out with them.
Did, it's limited by the piece of land. They can't have more than they have. Uh, when we went through this, we also went through, I was the one who, who said, you know, in order to comply, they would need ten. Uh, you, you know, ten customer parking spaces, like.
Yeah, yeah.
There's literally.
Which they put, as, as Greta will remember, they, they put those so that there's no way you could get to them.
I understand, and, and I guess what, what, what I um, I fear is. If, if you just, you know, if, if you just amend their current special permit across the street. This is just gonna become a storage facility. And those customer parking spaces are gonna be used for wayward cars, uh, that, you know. I, I would rather have them meet all of the requirements and be beholden to those requirements through the length of their special permit.
I think it's a really good point, and it would also ensure that they sell new cars, because the motor vehicle, definitely that was specific in the code. That we're giving it to a dealership for new cars, whereas if we wrap it up, they could use that for storage of just used cars. And you would be driving by every day, just looking at a massive lot of used cars. Um, which just doesn't have the same feel as when it's a, a new car dealership.
I agree to this point. You know, I, I agree, it's a good point, I, I just, I find it frustrating.
I, I, I understand that, I'm, I'm frustrated by it too. I just wanna try to do the most restrictive thing possible.
Well, they work out some, because I'll tell you, you're gonna make this into a, a full rounded, huge. Operation on both sides.
Well, they've had, they, they have that plot of land, they, they, they have that plot of land, and we don't want it used as storage.
So then, so then, why don't you develop some conditions on, on storage?
Also, I don't think there's any limits in the code for how big your car dealership can be or not be. You know, we may want it, but, but it, that's not prescribed in the.
Well, you have the right, so you can put conditions on the special permit, right? So you want, but no, no, no storage, I mean, why don't you?
Well, this makes me, when, when.
Something, but get the conditions in.
Well, they have, they have a prescribed, they already have a prescribed number of spaces for their stock. Their, their cars. And there's a prescribed number of spaces for customers and, and staff.
And they, and they don't have site plan approval yet, right?
Well, no, well, that's an issue, why can't, we can require site plan. Charlie, you, you.
They were before the planning board, they were before the planning board, but I think paused to get the special permit. And I'm going back, I'm not sure what sequence they're in, but they were before the planning board already.
Yeah, Charlie, you said that it was up to the building department if they had to get site plan, I don't, I'm, I don't see that. We can require.
They'll definitely, this definitely requires site plan, I don't think there's any question about it, it would be a new building and a new use on a property.
So then the question.
A new building?
Whether the customer park spaces are true customer spaces or not, the planning board will, will pick up. They'll either approve, they can approve the site plan or not, or the, the traffic, and then if there's a space between spaces at all, that would.
But do you have a problem with how many cars can be there, and how many, how many, and that it can't be used for storage, I mean, Brian?
Well, we have to say that you have to sell cars there, we have to say that you're going to have, and you are completing.
That's the primary purpose of it, and not.
Primary purpose, and yes.
They have a building with a showroom. They're gonna have some cars uh with a limited amount of spaces uh on the property. I think um, you know, site plan approval would be, would be very helpful, maybe we can.
I think we have to draw conditions in there, that's all, I think, I think you need to put your conditions in there, how many they can store, what they have to do. And Charlie, by the way, um, I got a couple of sites for you.
I also won't forget that early on, we really looked at the lighting. Uh, what they had suggested, and we definitely want to write into it that it has to be as described it, which is the same as across the street. Not as the odd lot that is completely different, but the, of the same exact.
Same or less.
Describe to us, which they said would be mimic or was comparable to the one across the street.
I will, you can, you can. That's a planning board thing for site, but you can put down that it's gotta be not greater than that.
And we put a number of customer spaces, as Brian pointed out, we say that it has to have an enclosed office. There is capable of transacting sales to completion, or, you know, to, to complete the sales transaction. You need customer restroom.
Right, I mean, they gave us, they gave us renderings, and they gave us lighting plans. Are we able to refer to the things, the final renditions of the things that we had agreed upon? Yeah, I think that we need to be very specific and, and uh refer to those, that way, those things would be. Given to the planning board with whatever other things that need to be given to the planning.
We just set the standards and the planning board will, see, I, Brian, I have an issue, and I'll, I'll get past it. But it's the same one Greta referred to. They gave us, they gave us whatever we said was necessary, and it didn't matter if it was the opposite of what they had said.
I know.
That's the way I thought, I, I really, I don't want to mislead, that is how it, Greta went from only used, only this, to that, to this, I mean. Will you do this, fine, I mean, they gave us a rendering of parking that made it impossible to get the cars out. Okay, then, oh yeah, you're right, we'll change that, yeah, I understand, but obviously, it didn't get thought through.
But sometimes, I, sometimes I go into a restaurant, and I'm thinking I'm gonna eat one thing. I see all these other things on the menu, it's only the one that I pay for at the end of the day, which matters. Right now, they're saying, we uh have requested a complete standalone special permit on this lot. And I think that that's what's uh in front of us, and they have to be held to that, they have to build a building, they have to go through the expense. Of putting in the lighting and leveling the ground and, and marking off the spaces and uh, you know. And if they're willing to do that, if they're willing to create that uh, uh, space, because. Somebody in the back office said, you know what, it's a better asset for us, because we can sell it off if we need to. And at the end of the day, that's what they, that, that's what they're asking for, so.
Charlie, I. Where they've vacated out a special permit for non-compliance issues, it's interesting.
I've been in a lot of car dealerships where they do stack the cars, though, as, um, it's, it's a very common occurrence. And that then, when you're looking, oh, do you have that color, and they will maneuver the cars around again, so that doesn't automatically mean that they weren't gonna sell the cars there.
Right.
My mind, from my experience in a car dealership.
I don't know how they do half the things they do with the parking lots in New York City. Yeah, they have smaller pieces of property with, with.
Nobody knows how they do what they do with the.
Where they literally lift the cars on top of the other cars.
Yeah.
And somehow they, they.
All right. Okay, so I guess the sense is you want something drafted. That approves it with significant conditions, is my right, is that, is that the sense?
Yes.
Yes.
Charlie, you have a sense of what the conditions are, you want to circulate it before? Why doesn't everybody see the things that they concerned about, so you can get them in there and?
Yeah, I have a pretty good sense on what everyone is um looking for, compliance with the code related to an auto dealership and so forth. So um, I'll circulate a draft before the next meeting, and we'll go from there.
Okay, and um. And we'll go, there's an interesting case I just came across, Charlie, that I'll send you. Basically talked about where somebody had a certain amount of time and conditions in the special permit, and they didn't keep to it. And they ended up bouncing it, and, and the court said, yeah, well, tough.
It's similar to kind of the probationary period that you guys typically.
That's another thing.
We're gonna give it for a short, for, you know, three years, we could even say two years to make sure in this case. Um, and, you know, when they come back, we'll ask them to describe how their operations go, we won't tell them, we'll ask them. And if they describe operations that are consistent and that are that, then we're okay, it strikes me, we can absolutely check that. Uh, we don't really have the power, we're sort of relying on them telling us, but we do have some ability to review it.
All right. So you wanna do that, and we'll take that up at the, one of our next meetings when we have extra time.
Sounds good.
All right, um, what's next?
Next is Walton, these people in front of us for quite some time, I think.
Yeah, that's been a wrap for a long time. I, I don't have a firm, you, you did up another resolution, right?
Yeah, I can share my screen if you guys.
I had some comments, I had some edits on your resolution, Char- uh, Charlie.
Okay, I, I drafted it in the day, uh, days of COVID, so I'm sure there's plenty of comments.
I gotta put my mask on then, if I'm gonna read it. Charlie, when you, I'm a total, when you got over the COVID, I had COVID, and the problem I had was. I kept testing positive afterwards. And I, and I found out that that happens, and it's not that you're contagious, and it's not that you have it, it's dead cells that it picks up. So if you have like in your nasal system, some cells that are leftover from the COVID. And I had to travel, and I needed to get back in with a thing, it was interesting. And they said the only way that the uh immigration would take it is if you had to show that you had COVID, you needed a doctor to say you had it. And that it was over, but you're still testing positive, you have to go in. And then I said, and if not, what happens, I just have my luggage sent back and I stay wherever I am? But it's interesting, but I finally, the other day, I just felt great, and I said, enough, and I took the eighth test, and it was negative.
That's the struggle I'm having with trying to get my kids back into school.
Oh, do they need a negative test for it, because they shouldn't require that?
They, uh, well, they need, um, it's ten days after their last exposure. So their last exposure doesn't end until my daughter is done with her quarantine, so it's another ten days after. The state mandated quarantine, so I'm looking at spring at this point. That's all right, a lot of family time.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Um, so can everyone see my screen, I hope?
Yes.
Okay, so, I mean, my first comment was um. On the one, two, three, four, fifth, whereas clause, it says, whereas. The applicant has determined that the following lot line designations that not, the, the language doesn't make sense, I think it's that. Where the applicant has determined that the following um, uh, your, uh, front and side yard designation shall apply. Something like that. Cause that's what they're determining, it's the, it's the yard, which is the front yard, which is the side yard, shall apply. That the following designations apply or shall apply something. Okay. Um, then. My, I, my next comment is just, again, it's just more tech, more language. It's um, the one, two, three, four, fourth, whereas on the second page. And it says, whereas the new landing and related canopy is proposed to be twelve point seven feet from the front yard lot line. I don't know if you meant there is no front yard lot line, it's either the front lot line or the front yard, so I think you mean front lot line.
Yep.
And the word yard should come out. And then, two whereas close downs, it says, whereas the existing stairs are actually constructed over the side yard. Of the, the words of the. B side lot line, cause right, they have two side yards. Or the B lot line is the side, yes, the B side yard, cause otherwise the B lot line seems, we have to sort of go back, so it's the B side yard. Or maybe not, cause you've already got side yard in, and it's not that it's constructed over, it's constructed in the side yard. Cause otherwise, over sounds like it's on, you know, cantilever. Okay, then you go down two more, and then whereas the new landing and related stairs will cure the existing encroachments. I didn't know, I didn't understand that, and it didn't, I'm not sure what you were trying to say there, Charlie, it didn't seem to.
So what I was trying to say was that, like, as the whereas clause that we just fixed, so the stairs, if they exist. Encroach over that side yard B lot line, so the new landing and stairs is going to. Cure that existing encroaching, or I should probably say eliminate that existing.
Right. Yeah, that would, then that would make sense, okay. And then, two, whereas closed down, this is, the fence has been constructed around the premises and includes lands. But it's not that the fence, oh, we, I guess, and incorporate, incorporates or fences in, I, it just includes, cause includes kind of, I guess incorporates. Maybe incorporates instead of includes.
Okay.
How about just surrounds?
Surrounds too, yeah, that's better too.
More passive.
Yeah. Um, and, and then two more whereas, or the next whereas clause, sorry, it says. The area variance are based on the actual boundaries of the premises and do not take into account the additional lands used. Which this board find minimizes the impact, it doesn't, I, I, you have to explain what that means, I mean, if before I said, I. If, if, if I was, if I needed a, from, just conceptually, it's not the actual what they did here, but. Just from what this says is, this implies that if I had a, I have a ten foot yard requirement, I have that regardless of where my yard line is. So if I'm ten feet from the line that isn't mine. It's, because it doesn't minimize, it's irrelevant, it doesn't minimize the impact of the area variance, because if, if I have a, if I have a yard. If I'm required to provide a ten foot side yard, and my original, when I showed it, I was thinking. Nine of those ten feet were actually beyond my lot line. And that I've already got some, you know, the, the ten feet within my lot, within my actual property line. That's one thing, but otherwise, it looks like if I needed ten feet, and before, and if I eliminated the, the, the extra nine feet, I'm like one foot from my side yard. That increases, so it doesn't min- so I don't know what you meant here by, by minimizes the impact of the area variances.
Could I suggest?
Yeah, go ahead, I was, it was kind of like, um, yeah, go ahead, Meg, I'm sorry.
Our variants are based on the actual boundaries of, of the premises, which are buffered by additional lands. Or which are surrounded by additional lands, which serve to, no, I'd say are buffered by additional lands. Um, and then take everything out, which this board find minimizes the impact um of the area variance.
That's good, that makes sense, that's good. Then in the next, whereas the words included, it says which included, but not limited to, I think it reads better if you say which includes, but. Then in the next, whereas the words included says which included, but not limited to, I think it reads better if you say which includes, but are not limited to, or but is not limited to. Something like that. Actually. I thought the rest was, I mean, I think the rest I didn't have a problem with, or maybe I don't remember if I finished reading it, but. Oh yeah, again, in the number three of the. Is that the last sentence is the area variance are also not substantial when considering that additional lands used by the applicant, but are not. I think that goes to the, the point we were just discussing, I think you have to rewrite that last sentence to say something more in the order of. Whereas.
Lands that buffer the property.
Yeah, I'll use the same language as above.
Yeah. And, and the. Number four, it wouldn't make the premises undevelopable, they already have building on it. So I don't think it's right to say which would make the premises undevelopable, because it's developed. So I think, conceptually, I think that's right, I think the size and shape of the premises makes doing any work here very difficult, something like that. But it doesn't make it undevelopable.
Can you say?
I think what you meant was to do further renovation, it didn't mean like totally 100% undevelopable, yeah, the additional.
Right, that's. So.
Right.
Or improvements.
Improvements is good.
Well, it depends on the improvements, because some improvements are possible, so I don't think we want to say improvements, I think.
You can say certain improvements.
What?
You can just say certain improvements.
Which makes most of.
I would leave it as many, because I can come up with many improvements that don't make any difference on the size of the property. So I would say many.
Or most.
I don't like most, because as I said, I can come up with a lot that of improvements, improvements doesn't mean expansion or alterations to the exterior. You can improve a house without going outside, so.
So many.
Substantial or meaningful?
Yeah. More than many, more than.
Not even substantial, even minimal ones.
I think any exterior alterations or exterior improvements, I think that's where you get the problem. So if you want to say which makes exterior improvements impossible without relief, then I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Because that's what we're talking, what we're talking about, not more improvement. Now, the standard provisions that we have always granted, there's always the standard clauses which we put, have put in for years and. Which I keep reminding you, Charlie, that we need to put in about, about, you know, that it's got to be. Oh no, I see you've got, it's just different, never mind, I take it back, it's there, except for the minimum.
Yeah, I went through a lot of the old resolutions, just kind of gathered them all.
Yeah, I see that, so that's okay, sorry, it looked shorter, but I see that's why you did it. Now, we used to say that you had to get the building permit and complete work within a certain time.
Yeah.
Do we? It's not in here now.
Usually within a year, it was a year.
Yeah, six months to a year somewhere.
It was always a year, not six months, David, it was a year, they had to, or get it within six months and complete it within a year.
Yeah, you had to get it within, it's to get it, the permit and complete it within a year thereafter, I don't even mind that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Within six months, you said?
Get the permit in six month and complete the same within a year thereafter. Sorry to be going in on the screen, I dropped the mouse.
And that was it, I stole my comments.
Charlie, if you just go back to the seventh whereas, when you get the opportunity, there's just a. There's a typo, should be single family residence. It says singe. Right.
Oh, and then in the next one, it should say an area variance or area variance, oh, area variance relief, no, that's okay, never mind, I guess, it's fine, ignore anything, yep, that's right. I, I don't have any more comments.
Okay, so should we make a motion to?
Yeah, is there a motion on this?
I make a motion to or through.
Seconded. Hey, Brian?
Yeah.
And then? Well?
Yes.
Okay. Robin?
Yes.
Yes. Next matter is 397 Palmer Avenue. We discussed this before.
Right, okay.
You know, Dave, I, I have a threshold question on this now, I did watch. The last meeting. But the, the threshold question is. Is, is the permit to operate a massage establishment? Is that what they're asking for?
It's a massage establishment that is also going to do skincare and body scrub. A lot of applicant asks for something, they dress it up as asking for a special more permit for something else, which they don't need a special permit for. You know, they say, oh, I want a spa with such and such and such, but the special permit. Guidelines for giving a special permit for a massage establishment, so I would say that we're giving a special, we, we are thinking about granting a special permit. For a massage establishment that will also provide, plans to provide skincare and body scrub.
Okay, so massage, massage establishment, which is. 342 dash 42.
Right.
One. It specifically mentions under there that it has to adhere. To the requirements set forth under. Article 16. And article 16. Can only exist to the manufacturing district because it's, that's the adult use. District, which specifically talks about massage establishments.
I haven't seen that, I'll look at that.
Wow, that would be different than how we've been.
Yeah, we've been applying it, we've interpreted it and applied it differently historically every time, including recently.
Right, but it clearly says under 342. Dash 42, one.
Yeah.
That. A permitted massage establishment located within the village shall adhere to all the requirements set forth under article 16.
Okay, so what are the requirements? I don't think that means the zone.
Yeah, it doesn't mean, it, it, it doesn't mean it has to be in that zone.
No, it just means that you have to comply with those general requirements.
So you have to look at what those requirements are and then apply them. But I don't know that we've ever done that, I don't know that we've ever looked at articles. Let's look at article 16.
Yeah, let's, let's look at article 16.
Where is it?
Because actually, is, is massage establishment, do we have any place where it's listed as a permitted use in the other district?
Well, it's an adult use, the problem is that massage can be adult use.
Asking, like, it says you can have food establishments, it says you can do storage, you can't do storage, do we, it does, is it spelled out somewhere in the code where it is permitted?
Well, it, adult uses, and this seems to be.
Right, I understand, I'm totally with you, Brian, I think that's really interesting, I was just asking another question. Like, because we're having, we're having this discussion, does that mean it's only in that district? Is it only fall under adult uses, or is it? As you could, I mean, because it's in that chapter, because massage establishment and therapy doesn't have to be only for adults.
Right. Does not.
Professional license, so.
Well, yeah, except I think massage establishments, actually, they do spell out under massage establishment. That it is not. It rolls out some of those, some of those things, that it's, that it's not for medical purposes, or it's not. You have to go through the entire. Thing, let me go through a little bit.
Yeah, the definition doesn't really, is nothing talk about it, doesn't say one way or the other.
What is the? I'm not being rude by dropping, I just dropped the mouse and I cannot find it, I can't believe it.
You did that about 15 minutes ago, you really lost?
I know, I still can't, and I'm, I'm sitting here, it's like, I don't throw it to anybody, it dropped.
You could, you could look down, I mean, is it underneath?
Yeah, it's not down, no, it's a, it's a wireless one. And I can't go to the code or do anything, and I, the last thing I did was I sent Charlie an email with a case I found, and then. I just heard it drop.
You know what, hold on. Part of the definition.
You know, it's interesting, but going back to use, massage establishments are not listed. As a, like as to what district they're permitted in.
That's correct.
Right, that's what I'm saying, and Brian found this article, went to article 16, which was very smart. And it's relating to adult uses, so you would think that.
But it doesn't say massage parlors in there.
But it does say under massage establishments that you have to.
Right.
To, you have to follow the guidelines in article 16, and to me, that seems, I think.
And, and by the way, if you go into the definitions. You'll find in the definition of massage establishment. What it is and what it is not.
Right.
This is not something which is part of a medical clinic or chiropractic or osteopath or physical therapy. This is a, this is basically a place where they derive their income primarily from. Providing a massage.
Um.
But massage is a professional license under New York law. It's not acupuncture, so just because you are, doesn't mean that it's automatically some sort of adult use and not something that is.
Oh, I'm, I, I, I understand that, and I, and I, and I have the code, you know, that it is, it is a licensed thing. I'm just trying to make sense of our village code.
I agree with you, I, I think that the village code seems to be saying it's adult use, because it says it has to comply with everything else. That's only allowed in an adult use district, and you can't find any other district where it says, yes, you can have massage establishment. So I agree with you, but it's not because of the nature of massage.
I'm not saying, yeah, I'm not saying that.
But it's because the code is relating to this article 16.
Yeah, I don't, I actually have a bigger, I don't know, I don't actually see that, I don't see that just because it says it has to come file, find with the conditions. I, I think that's different, but I do think it's an interesting issue that it doesn't, there's no place in the code that it says where it's permitted. And it doesn't actually, even in. In article. In article, you know, in, in the manufacturing district, say it's a permitted use, it talks about, and actually I want to look up something, I gotta check.
But what is it, what, what is it, they don't put all uses in there, it's, it's a professional licensed use, isn't it?
Yeah, there is no definition of adult use, I just looked up the word adult use.
I understand, but there's no, but there's no, what, what makes, does it say lawyers can be in a particular area?
That's what I don't know, if it's a business, right?
Yeah, but it also doesn't say lawyers have to.
I think another. I think another. I think another concern is that this is a non-conforming use, and it's a different non-conforming use than the prior use. And if you look at 342 dash 64B. They talk about a non-conforming use of the building shall not be changed to another non-conforming use. Except we're approved by the Board of Appeals after finding that the change will be to a less non-conforming use. And one that will be more harmonious with the surrounding areas.
The use, the use of the building is, is a, as a office use, right? You're not, you're suggesting that each individual place within the office building, if you have an office building that is a prior non-conforming use. And it exists.
Building's not a use, a building is a structure, there's uses within the building.
But the uses within the building are office uses, I can change my office from a lawyer's use to an architect's office. So I don't have to keep it as an architect or a lawyer or a dentist, as long as it's the same use under our code. So if a massage establishment is the same use, i.e. an office use. As the existing office use, like what was it, a dentist's office, then it is not a change in use, they're both considered professional offices.
Yeah, but, yeah.
Then it's a different use.
Given the hours that they're seeking. I would say that they are using, it's a different use, they're seeking, I think something like seven days a week till 10 o'clock at night. That's not use.
Well, it may not be that it's an, actually, Greta, I don't think it's a different use, it may be that it's an expansion of a non-conforming use. And therefore.
The use of the build, isn't it, in other words, you're saying that an office building now? So you're going to go into every building that's non-conforming? And then every office within it?
No, I think what Greta is saying is that, and it's interesting, is that it's an office building, as long as they're all offices, then you can keep. Doing whatever you want, and you can go from architect to lawyer, and if the lawyer was there till 10 o'clock at night and the architect closed at six, it would still be an office use, so I'm not sure the hours are the issue, Greta.
I don't think so, and what about the dentist, and it's a freak, I can operate the dentist, I mean, if there's a reason that we want to limit the all operation inside it. That's different, then you operate, then everybody should be bound to that.
I, I think the real question is, I think we really have to go, even though we've never realized it or thought about it, I think the whole question is. Is this an office use? Or is this, is a massage establishment an office use? I think that's really where the question is. It, right, the non-conforming use is an office building is a massage establishment and office use, and. Since we have a definition in the code, and the definition in the code doesn't say, actually, as I said, I hadn't really, hadn't really thought about this until Brian raised it, which is. It's good to have somebody look at things differently than. Given that it's got a definition of a massage establishment, doesn't say. It's an office use. And it doesn't include the office of a physician, surgeon, chiropractor, which means, which means, just to be clear. If this had been, wait, if this had been a doctor's office, instead of a dentist's office. Then it couldn't be changed to a. Massage parlor, because it's not the same use, this specifically says it's not the same use.
Right.
That's a, right of a saying.
So I think that based on that. They're saying, and it seems to me, because it specifically lists the physician, I don't, whatever, so I'm not sure that you could say, but a dentist is the same, so maybe the answer is it is not, it's a change of use.
The applicant talked about professional services, so he said that it was, the use was for professional services. And you can find massage license under, on New York State, it's listed along with doctor and dentist and chiropractor. There is a masseuse, you know, someone, so that was arguing that it was a professional service. But I'm struck by this article 16 that Brian found, that it says it has to comply with article 16. Article 16, so we have to look at what do things that are in article 16, one of them is it can't be in a certain radius to residential areas.
Right.
Can't be close to another one of the same, can't be next to a worship park, playground or playing field. If, even if you're going to say it doesn't mean it has to be in the industrial area, I think it has to follow those other restrictions that Brian.
I think that's.
I, I also, I want to go one, I want to go one step further. While a masseuse is a licensed. Use. Masseuse can be used in conjunction with. A, a health spa, you know, a gym and all of that, and, and, and those things are specifically not considered massage. Pollers under our village code, so yes, it's a licensed profession, however, we're really looking at the business here. And the business here as defined is a massage parlor, because it derives the. And the business here, as defined, is a massage parlor, because it derives the-
It's a massage establishment, it seems like, it's not a massage parlor, it's a massage-
Well, yeah, they keep going back and forth with the, with the language.
But the title of the special permit that we would be giving is a massage establishment. Try to characterize it as a massage parlor.
Um, I have to, can I, if, if, no, everyone doesn't mind, and this is not Mamaroneck, I can't tell you exactly, but I can tell you how the term and how all of these, how all of these issues arose originally, which doesn't mean that's true today, but the whole issue of massage establishment arose probably twenty plus years ago, when at the time, massage establishments were used, or maybe more, maybe in the, probably more thirty years ago, time flies when I'm not thinking about it. When massage, when massage parlors, I'll use the term parlors, were used for things other than massages, in the nature of adult uses, and so, codes everywhere, in many parts of the state, were amended at the time to try and make it clear that, you know, merely providing massages was okay, it's when a masse, so like, if you had massages at a health club, that's not a massage establishment. But the problem is that the way our code does it, is our code seems to say you could have just a perfectly good massage establishment as something completely separate, as old as you get, as the special permit, which I think makes sense, because you can have a perfectly legitimate massage establishment that provides massages, I mean, there's lots of them, I mean, there's a, you know, there's a nice fancy one in Larchmont, that does nothing but provide massages, and it's, you know, there may be them in Mamaroneck.
There's one on, there's one right on, there's one right on Mamaroneck Avenue.
Right, so I think they're perfectly fine, but I-
Yeah, I think, I think Meg is right, it's-
Comply with the standards in Article sixteen.
Right, it's-
Something we haven't considered, and I think we do have to consider that.
Yeah.
I think regardless of whether it could be an upstanding place, or how it's being used, or what, it's not for us to say if there-
We might have to look at the sixteen.
But, as, when I read this code, it could be this is outdated, and the code should be revised, and have more opportunities for more massage establishments to be in more districts, but I'm pretty much firm right now, that we don't even have to ask, talk about the non-conforming use, and which can go in an office building, because in my mind, it's actually not permitted, because it's definitely within the radius of residential areas. We could look for other things, but I think that's not-
All the ones that we've approved are.
I think, I think that's a problem for us, not for us, but I think it's a problem for the village, for the future, but I think, given what, the fact that it says it has to comply with the standards in Article sixteen, I think that it's very clear that we have to find these standards, I don't see, and the fact that we didn't is an interesting issue, and maybe-
We needed Brian on the board.
Need to address the-
This is what I'm gonna be known for.
Make one, one point for the board's consideration, if you look under the adult use district criteria, so right under three forty-two, one hundred and ten, three forty-two, one-one-one allows you to waive those restrictions, so it is something if you would like to consider.
Well, you have- With all the other, other problems, I don't want-
You have granted, you have a massage place, why don't you, why, how, how do you handle the one that's right in town?
We can waive the-
I think that's-
Uh, David, conditions for waiver, the proposed use will not be contrary to the public interest or injurious to nearby properties, and that the spirit and intent of this article will be observed, so we made that, so we could have made that finding.
Yeah.
But-
Wait a second.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, really quick, but this one is going into a residential district, unlike the one on Ward Avenue, which was not-
Wait a minute.
The commercial district.
What about the one on Ward Avenue?
Let me just finish, so this one is going into a residential district, so our consideration of waiving the condition should be different than what we did for one that was in the C one.
No, there should be-
Wait a minute, we have a bigger issue, in order to waive the restrictions, you have to make all of these findings, conditions for waiver, not contrary to the public interest, establishment of an additional use will not be contrary to the-
Fifty-one percent.
And fifty-one-
Fifty-one percent of agreement of the neighbors.
Right, fifty-one percent of the property owners within the restricted area is finding-
So that's, that's not within our discretion, the applicant would actually have to come to us with that.
So then how do you handle the fact?
But there is no, there is no-
That is a board that handles, that the board is responsible and handles interpretations, has consistently provided for. And, and the others that I know of, that you've got, what is, what's that one spa place on?
Yeah, the one we recently approved.
Well, there's that one, and what about, there's at least three or four others.
Hey, David, can I ask you a question, because I'm not familiar with the history of what the board has really done for the other places, the, 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 the real point, when it comes to a massage establishment, is that their primary source of revenue is through the administration of massages. So those other things that you approved, did they do other things?
No, shots of massages, does masseuse massage.
Nothing but massages.
They just, the ones in town have a big sign.
One does.
The ones in town, right in the village, has a sign, that's what they do, they have the other one. I mean, I just think, I just think, I don't know what Charlie thinks, but it's like, y, y, you're gonna really open, I mean, you've done an interpretation, de facto, if not a de jure, the interpretation here, on all the others.
No, it's an oversight, not interpretation, you know, it's an oversight precedent, I don't think so.
Charlie, if, if the, if the board found in the past, because they were unaware of a piece of the code, you know, it, it didn't come up, it wasn't discussed, and now we are aware of the code, how do we handle it?
So I, I'd have to look into it a little bit, but as a general rule of thumb, there is no estoppel from a municipality curing a defect that they have made in the past.
Right.
Then we have to vacate all the permits we've issued, right, Charlie?
Right.
It would be helpful to maybe get all the resolutions of the massage establishments that you've permitted in the past, and understanding of how they were permitted, just to make sure, I know we recently just did one, but I don't know others, and, and maybe they are before people's time on this board, or folks weren't involved, beginning to understanding of, was this issue ignored, was it addressed, was it not even considered, truly an oversight?
Truly, you know, I could tell you, having been on the board for, for at least, for at least one of them, possibly two, we never even paid it, we didn't realize it, we didn't, it was an oversight, complete oversight, completely, I mean, we, look at the one we just approved, no, this was not noticed, we, we omitted, we missed it, we, you know, didn't, we just didn't focus on it, whatever we did, we, you know, wasn't like-
So what happens, Charlie, you're telling me then that all of the existing ones have to be closed up, right?
No.
No, why not? Why not? You said you can't estoppel them, we've made a mistake, undo it.
Unless the village is going to, uh, unless the village is going to issue a, you know, a, a violation, or something, we don't have the power to revoke the special. Oh, we do have the power, but we can't, oh, but I don't think we can revoke it without, can we revoke a special permit, when there's been no evidence of any, I don't know, of no evidence of anything, can we?
Yeah, those are all things I would have to look into, you know, how does treating this application, and applying this section of the code that hasn't done in the past, what is the impact on all the existing establishments? I'm not quite sure on that answer, I'd have to-
Well, not only that, I think that's one of the things you have to look at, and the other thing is, where the board has applied the code in a manner that doesn't enforce that section, that constitutes a de facto interpretation. I guess you could argue, we were ignorant, and therefore it wasn't an interpretation, it was a stupidity, that's an interesting argument to take. That's not going to engender very much, I, I don't know, I, I think you're really opening doors here, that are just gonna cause significant potential problems.
It strikes me that, now that we're aware of this, I don't see how we can approve this, and if we made the mistake before, we made the mistake before, but I don't see how we can say, oh, now we know about a provision of the code that we didn't pay, that we didn't realize existed before, but because we've made mistakes before, we're going to continue to make that mistake, I don't see how we can do that.
Or we say, or you say, first of all, I think Charlie will look at it, but I think there is another angle, and that is to say, that the others that have been approved have never had this implied, they've never had it enforced by anybody, and were never had it applied, and therefore, the board will continue to operate under its prior procedures and interpretations, that they're not applicable to this.
It was never interpretation, we just didn't consider it.
Well, then that's, 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 that's saying that the board stupidity, I'm just gonna say this, really means that they're all at risk now, I mean, listen, I hear you. Look, I don't-
Call it the Brian rule.
Please don't.
I think, I think, um-
I mean, no trouble for, for anybody, uh, and actually, if you remember, I posed this as a question, being new to this, uh, board, I asked, you know, uh, why it says this. Unfortunately, it's, it's now, it's new information, uh, and I, you know, obviously, if it's something that's never been considered, you know, it's an oversight, I think that the board is allowed to make oversights and errors, as long as they're not, uh, you know, done knowledgeably. You know, so therefore, I don't necessarily think that the things that have been done are defective, because, uh, you know, because of an honest oversight, unfortunately, when it comes to application, um, the code is the code. Uh, I think that's what we're here to follow, um, this may mean a, a, a change going forward. But right now, that's not even in front of us, the only thing that matters now is the matter on our agenda. How does this affect the matter on our agenda?
Or, or we could find that we don't approve this, where Robin was going, is whether or not this is the same use or not, is the same, the same professional use or not. So if it's a change of use, and it's in a non-conforming residential district, we could not approve this request on those grounds, and at the time, do some research on what we've done, or go to the trustees and say, hey, do you want to, you know, sound code and what happened?
What you're saying is what you're going to do, you've just, you've just set yourself up, I think, as, as a lovely defendant, quite frankly, I, I don't get that, I, I-
I don't think, can I suggest-
We could just pretend it's this.
No, we have more than one reason to, to, it was argued about whether, it's, we also know that they came to us because they're asking to continue in a residential district, a non-conforming use, and we were all asked to consider whether or not this is the same use. We have two things that we are, that, you know, and then Brian brought up another issue, but we do have this issue that was before us on this application, and if we were not inclined to grant them the special permit for those reasons, we just don't need to consider, but as, I'm not saying we have, we ignore it, or we just kick it down, I would hope that we, there's something else we could do, we could go back to the trustees to, you know, to understand this, or, I don't know.
Can I make a suggestion, that at this point, we get Charlie to do some research on these open issues, we, we adjourn the, we adjourn this till the next meeting, we ask Charlie to do some research on these open issues, then, based on the information we get at the next meeting, we can make a decision of which direction we want to go, do I also have to, want to point out one other thing with respect to those other applications, there is this waiver provision, and the waiver provision, presumably, we could have made two of the, 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 the three conditions easily for the others, and only the third, which is the five hundred feet from a residential district, so the only issue for the others would rise to the extent any portion of it was with, to the extent that it was within five hundred feet of a residential district in Mamaroneck, everything's within five hundred-
Everything is.
District, pretty much, so, um, but maybe only, you know, that it might be, you know, that would be the only piece that obviously we couldn't just waive on our own. So I think, let's get the information from Charlie, and based on that, we can have another think about what to do here.
I do think we're sixty days-
Why don't you also look into the liability issue here?
As far as for this application.
On an article, on a, on a constitutional claim, on a, a ninety-three action, yeah.
Okay.
Why would it be a taking, what do you, would you be saying it was?
Describe, equal protection argument.
Oh, that's-
I do think that we're sixty days out from closing the public hearing, do we have to ask for, do we, we have to do something about it for this?
We'll extend it and ask the applicant, I mean, I think, I think we're barking up a tree. I'm just gonna say this, I think we're barking up a tree, that if it's not discriminatory, boy, it, you better have a great way to talk it through, because I hear what you're saying. But I brought nineteen eighty-three actions, that's what I used to do, and it, to me, this is about, you've got one in the village, you've got, you've got four or five, and one right in the heart of it, they're all in the same issue, and the board, and Brian, the Board of Appeals, unlike other boards, has the right to interpret and apply the code, and it can make interpretations of the code. It could actually find that it doesn't apply to these districts, in, into the adult district. I think, you know, and I think you've got somebody who's, I mean, I, I don't think she's a natural born American, I mean, I'm not either, but so what, and, but I think, I just think you're walking into an area that, I mean, I would just say, you know, ten years ago, this is what, you know, I would have had a good time with on the other side. I would like to know that, because I think that's an, that is a factor, maybe it's not an important factor, but it's a factor. Because I think that we, I think before you treat someone differently, than you've been treating people, it's nice to say, well, we didn't know it, and now that's the rule, no, it's more than that. We didn't know it, we applied it, we've created a whole situation now, so you have an existing status of things, that is now being altered after somebody has apparently gone out and bought something, they bought the business, right, they signed the lease. I don't know, I mean, I think you're, you're biting into an area, but we'll see. Well, I'd like Charlie to do some work on this thing, and then we can talk about it.
I don't know what, you know, they, they, they bought an unlicensed business. I, I don't, I actually don't know what they bought, because the, the, the business wasn't, uh,
I don't know.
Wasn't licensed, or I guess they didn't have a permit to do business there. But, again, I brought it up because it's in the code, uh, I guess it's always good to address these things, and I think Charlie, any information you can give us, of course, we, we want, I'm not coming down one way or another, I'm just looking at the code. Uh, so now, we've got an issue to deal with.
No, so let's, Charlie, why don't you look at it, then? I think everybody should look at it, and I think you should do it. And I think you should also deal with the fact, in your dealing with this thing, the number of existing places that exist because of this. You've got a preemption issue potentially, with the state issuing the license, now that, I don't believe New York has applied preemption there. The general principle of estoppel not applying, you're right, as a general rule, but look at the Parkview case, and the E F S. That was, my case was E F S, those were the two companion cases that went to the Court of Appeals. I didn't do it, I was a successful party below, so I didn't have to go up. Um, but I, I think you, you're opening doors all over here, I think, but maybe not, I'll leave that to you, Charlie. I just think that, uh, I'm gonna use a bad expression here, I think people aren't gonna take this line down, couldn't resist. And I also think, and I'm just gonna say this, I had surgery once on my spine after a bad fall in Iceland. And the other time, I didn't have to have it, and the reason I didn't have to have it was I spent five days a week having a massage treatment. That allowed me to cancel surgery that was gonna be very significantly larger than the one I finally had. And I think that there's an innuendo that takes place here, that may have very, may not be justified, but it would be true of anything, it would be true of, um, it, it's, it's, I think, as Robin said, it's a thirty, forty year old, go, things were named differently, but that's true of many things.
But, but-
But I don't know, I think it's true.
It's getting a little late.
I think-
It's kind of late, getting late for me, so.
Okay, so why don't we all, Charlie, why don't you, you've got your hands full on this one.
Yep, you got the charge.
And, uh, so, we're finally, we earned your keep here, what can I say to you, and I, and I think, um, yeah, I mean, we've got a, yeah, I'm, there's a concern here, but, all right, we'll deal with it. Anything else, we all said?
Okay, I make a motion to close.
I, you know, I, I'm going to defer your motion. We can adjourn right now by pushing the button. All the one in favor of adjourn and go home.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.